Salem for Monday, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. If the recorder please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton is absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Leung? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counselor or Commissioner Phillips, uh, do you have a motion regarding election of a Vice Chair of the Housing Authority?
Thank you, Chair Chris Hoy. Yes, I do. I would like to move the nomination of Commissioner Virginia Stapleton.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Do we need a second for that, Mr. City Attorney? I apologize for not knowing that.
Yes, please.
Thank you. We have a second on that nomination?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Are there any other nominations? All right, we'll close the nominations then for Vice Chair of the Housing Authority. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton is, well, she's no longer Vice Chair, excuse me. Commissioner Stapleton is absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Leung? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike?
Aye.
Chair Hoy?
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Stapleton. That's what happens when you're missing meeting.
Can you please allow the second assigned language interpreter to join the meeting?
Certainly. Courtney, are you hearing that?
And whose name would that be?
That would be Cindy.
Thank you. She's in.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed then with the agenda. We are on approval of additions and deletions. Are there any, Commissioner Phillips?
There are not.
Thank you. And I see we have nobody signed up for public comment. Commissioner Phillips, the consent calendar.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar, which include three point one, the minutes from the meeting in January twenty-fourth, as well as the action item three point two A, the author, to authorize the acceptance of HUD FSS grant funds and approve the addition of one-time permanent FSS case manager. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Anderson, is there a discussion? All right. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton is absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Leung? Absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike?
Aye.
Chair Hoy?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We do not have any public hearings. We have no special orders of business, but we do have information reports. Ms. Yoots, I see you have joined us. Do you have anything you'd like to share with us on information reports before we take questions?
Good evening. I'm Nicole Yoots. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And tonight, we just wanted to take the time to express our gratitude to Steve Powers. Steve has served as the Executive Director of the Salem Housing Authority since two thousand and fifteen. He has provided guidance, patience, and the utmost support to our agency, and the Salem Housing Authority has achieved so much under the leadership of Steve by developing and preserving many S H A-owned and managed apartment complexes, gaining more grants than ever before, providing more voucher opportunities to the community, and most importantly, guided the Housing Authority to launch the Housing First Model through the Homeless Rental Assistance Program. I could not quantify the amount of lives that have changed over the course of his leadership with the Salem Housing Authority, and we are grateful for the entire time that we've had. The entire team at Salem Housing Authority wishes Steve and his family a happy retirement. Beyond that, informationally wise, wanted to let everybody know that Yucquah Hall is well underway. We are two months into the construction project. Lots of demolition. Things are changing. It's starting to look like a construction site, and we're looking forward to seeing the progress go. South Fair Apartments, which is completely under, under construction as well, is two months in. We have two buildings vacant, and we have two buildings that are now being relocated from the families so that we can make improvements to the apartments and return them back to freshly new apartments. Other than that, I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Yoots, and I would like to echo your sentiments regarding Mr. Powers. I'll be saying more later, but thank you for sharing that. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Chair Hoy. I, I'm the same way about Mr. Powers, and we'll be saying more of that in the City Council meeting, but I agree with everything you said. I have a question, Ms. Yoots, about the, the FSS grant. It seems like a wonderful thing, and I, and I'm hoping you could express to the public, you know, what this will do and how this will be helpful.
I should have mentioned that we're very excited. Again, I'm Nicole Yoots with Salem Housing Authority. And the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, Family Self-Sufficiency Program is a stabilization program. The individuals that are on either public housing or Section Eight voucher systems can apply to be on this program, which is a five-year grant program in which individuals set goals under SMART goals with their case managers that who then wrap around them to help them achieve those goals. That may include gaining employment, gaining stable income, getting off TANF welfare or other assistance. And many, many of the families that are on this program actually end up purchasing homes at the end of it. What happens with the Family Self-Sufficiency Program is that anytime anybody has an increase in income, the difference in rent that would be paid would go into an escrow account. If they successfully achieve their five years of goals, they receive that entire escrow account. We've had accounts as low as eighteen hundred, up to thirty-some thousand dollars that have gone towards down payments of homes. It's very exciting that our team was able to express the need for getting that ten percent additional this year. So instead, so we were able to add one additional full-time case manager to our portfolio to help individuals out there and serve them better.
Thank you, Ms. Yoots. That's excellent.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. I was hoping that's what you would say. It sounds terrific, and it's just another example of the good work that you and your staff have been doing, under the direction of, of soon-to-be former City Manager Powers.
Are there other questions for Ms. Yoots? I am not seeing any hands. Thank you, Ms. Yoots, for shepherding the Yucquah Hall project and South Fair apartment project. Those are monumental things, and they will have real impacts on real people in the city, and I'm really grateful for your work.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, I see no further items on our agenda, so the Housing Authority is adjourned.
Hey, folks, I'm gonna have to step away during the urban renewal area meeting. Can someone text me when we're transitioned into the City Council meeting? Sorry, but I'm asking for a volunteer.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. Take care, folks. See you soon.
Hey, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order for February twenty-eighth. If the recorder, please call a roll.
Board Member Stapleton is absent. Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leung? Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike has stepped away. And Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay, any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. I have no one signed up for public comment. We'll go to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yo.
I believe there was an individual signed up for the U R A.
Yeah.
Is he in the room, Courtney?
Yes, Mr. Deacon.
Oh, it's Mr. Deacon. He's on. Just a second here. Let me find him here. Yep, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry. I went right by him. I was gonna have him on the City Council. Steve Deacon.
Yes, I'm here.
You're on, Mr. Deacon.
Oh, um, well, I'm here on behalf of, well, just a little quick history. Our company is the owner of the Old Nordstrom Store. And we are planning to replace the Old Nordstrom with a hundred and fifty-seven apartments of varying sizes from studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. And I'm here to support the removal of the Sky Bridge. As you might imagine, the Sky Bridge, if it were to stay in place, would abut our building and would make some of the apartments basically unusable because no one would be able to see out their windows. And it would be a bridge to nowhere, and it would also interfere with the new streetscape plan that we're gonna, we're working with Cherie Worgren and her group to, even though it's ahead of schedule, we're gonna, as we pour back the sidewalks there, it'll, it'll incorporate your new streetscape plan. So the bridge wouldn't be so good for that. So I'm just here to say that I hope you support the removal of it because it would be important for our project, and I think it's the right thing to do for this, for the city. And I think it's also probably appropriate for me to say that I've really enjoyed working with the various staff at the city. I've been extremely impressed with how cooperative everybody has been.
Great. Thank you very much. We're really looking forward to your, the progress on your project. It's a really, it's a really exciting one. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming down. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Deacon? I guess not.
I guess not.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good night.
Good night. Okay. Now we'll try the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to note, Counselor Leung has joined us, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
So we have item three point one A, the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. Three point two A, authorizing the short-term borrowing from the Gophers Urban Renewal Area. Item three point two B, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the Mill Creek Industrial Park Urban Renewal Area. Item three point two C, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. Item three point two D, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area. Item three point two E, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area. Item three point two F, authorizing the short-term borrowing for the West Salem Urban Renewal Area. Item three point three A, exception to the Riverfront Urban Renewal Area Grant Program Guidelines to fund one hundred percent of demolition costs for removing the Sky Bridge between Salem Center South Building and former Nordstrom Building. Item three point three B, reallocation of additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Strategic Project Grant Program. And that concludes, that concludes the consent calendar.
Great. Thank you very much. Any, any questions or comments? Yes. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping that Ms. Rutherford might speak to the Urban Renewal Agency's participation in the removal of the Sky Bridge, just to sort of give us a quick overview for some people that aren't, haven't read the documents, watching might, might be, just be aware of how that works.
Okay.
Absolutely. Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So we have, I believe, eight or possibly nine Sky Bridges in our downtown. And each of these Sky Bridges has, each bridge has a unique ownership structure to it. They're not all owned by the same entity. And in this situation, we have a Deacon who is going to redevelop the Nordstrom Building, but the Sky Bridge is associated with Salem Center Mall. Salem Center Mall has, has been on the market for over a year. It was recently pulled off the market. It's currently in financial receivership and has been for the last few years. And so there are multiple ownership entities as a part of that process with Salem Center Mall. And because the, there's no financial benefit for Salem Center Mall or Wells Fargo, who holds the note on Wells, on Salem Center Mall, or the property management firm that's in charge of operating Salem Center Mall, to remove the bridge, and it's not under Deacon's control. And the Urban Renewal Agency is trying to fill the gap and bridge, bridge the bridge, bridge the removal of the bridge by bringing financial resources so that none of these parties, particularly the mall, is out of pocket on the removal when there is no benefit to the mall. But it's also needed to facilitate the overall revitalization of that area.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. If the recorder please call a roll.
Board Member Leung?
Aye.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike is absent. Board Member Stapleton is absent. Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Yeah. See if we got anything else. I don't think we have anything else on there. Oh, that's it. Any further business? Okay, then we are adjourned. I'm gonna call to order a meeting of the Salem City Council Monday, February twenty-eighth. If the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton is absent. Counselor Anderson?
I'm present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike? Absent. Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Are there any additions or deletions, Counselor Hoy?
No.
All right. It's time for council and city manager comment. So who's first? Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to address tonight. First, as mentioned in one of our earlier meetings, that our esteemed city manager, Steve Powers, this will be his last meeting with us. And it was really, you know, pretty awesome to attend his career retirement celebration with many of you here tonight, last week. Steve, personally, thank you for your leadership and guidance in my, you know, first year or fourteen months now in City Council. And I can really tell, you know, that you've made a huge impact on city staff, as well as your colleagues throughout your career. So, you know, again, I wish you congratulations on your retirement, and I hope you get to enjoy it well. I don't envy you the lake effect snow that you'll have to deal with in Michigan, but, you know, thank you. Beyond that, I also want to comment on, not last Friday, but seven days before that, City Council President and now State Representative Chris Hoy and I and Dr. Kathleen Harder got to tour the church at the park micro shelter at, where at the Catholic Community Services property off of Portland Road nine days ago, and it was just really, you know, inspiring to see, you know, what a difference managed sheltering looks like in our community. And I just, that was very impactful. Once again, it's the second time, the first time since touring the state pavilion that I got to see that in person. And, and what I remember from the state pavilion was the sound of, you know, just silence. It was so quiet and well-maintained, but the transition this time with the, the site that has families present at the Catholic Community Service Center was the sound of happy, safe children laughing. It was just very powerful. So, you know, I just wanted to comment on that and, and thank, you know, staff and everybody who's been involved in moving us towards managed sheltering. Finally, at the risk of going a bit over my allotted time, I just want to comment on the backdrop that the world finds itself in. Tonight, our hearts go out to the people of Ukraine. We have watched as the Ukrainian people and the Ukrainian leaders continue to demonstrate utter courage in defense of democracy and their nation's independence. I think the words from President Volodymyr Zelensky, "I need ammunition on a ride," will be remembered throughout history. The senseless and unprovoked violence from the illegal invasion of Ukraine is a result of Putin's weakness. The consequences of war cannot be overstated. Hundreds of people have died, including civilians and children, and hundreds of thousands of people have been displaced in just a few short days. On Sunday, the Associated Press released horrific images of a six-year-old Ukrainian girl who was killed as a result of shelling in Mariupol, Ukraine. The images of the girl's mother and father standing by as medics, nurses, and doctors perform CPR for this dying child are now burned into my memory and the memory of millions of us around the world. As a father of children and an emergency room physician, there are not words to describe the ways in which my heart broke when the doctor, the hospital doctor said, "Show this to Putin." The eyes of the child, the crying doctors. In my position as a local leader, I want Salem to join the chorus of communities in this country and around the world that are condemning the violent and unprovoked invasion of Ukraine. We stand with Ukraine. We demand that Putin cease firing and withdraw from Ukraine. Diplomatic resolution is a sign of strength and real leadership. It is my hope that by ending this violence, we can truly stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine and Russia while rejecting the weakness of actions taken by the increasingly isolated and weakened Putin regime. Later this evening, Salem City Council will take up a resolution to commit to the elimination of nuclear weapons. And with the events of this past week, the urgency of this resolution could not be more clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think we're all in agreement with you on that one. Chris Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you, Counselor Phillips, for your words. I couldn't say anything you said better, and I'm not gonna try, but thank you. I appreciate everything you just said. I just wanted to take a moment and thank Mr. Steve Powers for his time as our city manager and for his friendship and for his camaraderie. I am going to miss him greatly as the leader of this, of the administrative portion of this city, and I wish him all the best in his retirement. And thank you, Steve, for everything. I have no idea why you want to go to Michigan, but thank you for your service here in Salem. On a, on a, on a totally different note, I just wanted to mention that, with Counselor Phillips talking about how we toured the, one of our micro shelter communities recently, that was the first time I'd been to that location, and it was, as he said, it was the, the sounds of happy children were, they resonated throughout the whole time we were there, and it was really a wonderful experience. I had the opportunity recently to invite one of the residents of that community to speak in support of House Bill four zero three seven in front of both the House and Senate Housing Committees. And I'm very pleased to say that her compelling testimony, I think, is what got that bill across the finish line in both the House and the Senate, and it's on its way to the governor's desk. This is the bill that would require the Department of Administrative Services to work with the city to lease the city some of their underutilized or unutilized land within the city so we could locate other micro shelter communities, and I couldn't be happier that that's the case. So, thank you.
Great work on that, Counselor Hoy, as well. You deserve an enormous amount of credit for that. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had remarks prepared about the horrible situation in Ukraine, but I'm gonna adopt everything Counselor Phillips said. I too have seen the pictures of that six-year-old girl. And we need to do everything we can, and that's part of the reason I pulled another item on the agenda, which relates to how Salem, we invest our funds and, and how we have an investment policy, and I think that relates in a small way to it. So I, I'm, I agree with everything you said and, and how you said it. Now, moving to a much more prosaic subject, I want to talk about, about the city manager Powers. I'm sorry, I was not able to come to his retirement party on Thursday as I was out of internet contact the whole afternoon. But, and maybe, maybe it's good because I had some comments of a roasted kind of nature, roasting kind of nature that I might have made to the city manager, and I'm not gonna make them now. I actually ran into him at his final staff meeting when I stopped by City Hall about four fifteen today, and I, I told them what I was gonna say, so I did get, get, get at Steve. But, you know, what I really want to say is I really appreciate, appreciated his one-on-one meetings that he had regularly with me and, and I, and I know all other counselors. I appreciated two things. It was, we both were able to be candid with, with each other, and that's what I'm saying. I was candid with him about issues, and he was candid with me about issues, and we both knew there was the trust there that this is not necessarily of things that we were gonna share with the whole public, but it was just one-on-one with the city manager discussing important vital issues. And I learned so much from that, and I, I hope he learned a little bit in terms of how various counselors felt about things. So I wish you all the best in your retirement, and I have to say, as someone who grew up in Illinois and Wisconsin, what's the problem with Midwest, upper Midwest winters? So you'll, you'll like them and you'll have fun. So, thank you very much, Steve, and Godspeed on your way.
Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Counselor Leung. I'm not going to repeat some of the things that other counselors have said, but I also support the resolution that Counselor Phillips has talked about. As a local leader, I want to reassure our Ukrainian community here in the city to know that we stand by you. We see you. I also want to say a big congratulations to Judge Kit Tanji Brown Jackson, being nominated to the U.S. Supreme Court. Judge Jackson is one of the nation's brightest legal minds and a breadth of experience in the legal system. And while, yes, I understand this is not Salem-related, it is important because it's a historic first and win for our Black community in and out of Salem. And I also want to thank city manager Stephen Powers for your leadership. I wish you well. I also was not able to attend your celebration because I was also without internet. Enjoy the snow in Michigan. I also want to now talk about a few local things. First, for the H RAP program. You know, yesterday, I actually had a chance to take a Lyft ride, and my driver was actually the first graduate from the program. And it was nice to be able to reconnect with them and hear about what they're doing with their life and their passion and their journey and how the H RAP program saved them. I really hope, especially as the council moves forward, we continue to invest in this much-needed program for our community. And my last thing, and this is another local announcement, is third, it's a big local hurrah to Jonathan Jones at the Log Kitchen and Cocktails. Mr. Jones is a head chef and one of the few Black business owners we still have in Salem. Mr. Jones was recently nominated as a semifinalist for Best Chef Northwest from the James Beard Foundation. To me, this is an incredible honor for one of our local businesses, and we should celebrate Mr. Jones's success. If you haven't checked out Epilogue yet, please do. There are vegetarian, vegan, even meat options available and gluten-free. One of my favorite dishes has always been the duck legs, and if you're a beef eater, I read on a recent social media post that the beef cheeks are back. So to Mr. Jones, congratulations on your achievement. I'm rooting for you to win as a finalist and continue to show Salem how proud we should be of our local chefs who do not only social justice and community work, but they make awesome, fresh, and local foods. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meñez de Vu, Jose Gonzalez, and for those that don't know, I, I introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight our city's longtime diversity, and I also want to echo my fellow counselors' comments on Ukraine, thinking of them. But I also want to highlight the brave Russian people standing up protesting. standing up protesting in their own country, you know, it's just, and I think of them too, and you know, something that we, it's hard to do even in our own country. Even though this maybe isn't the right time to bring this up, it just reminded me of all the countries and territories the U.S. has claimed. Puerto Rico, for example, they're advocating for representation in D.C. because it's basically taxation without representation. So, it just reminds me, you know, that we have to look at ourselves too. You know, on a positive note, thank you, Mr. Powers. You're the first city manager I've worked this closely with. So, I'm going to measure everybody against you, you know, so. You know, lastly, I want to pass along a message from the Northgate Neighborhood Association. Thank you for keeping tabs on us, and they're just asking city staff to work more closely with the county and ODOT to help keep Salem clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, one and all. Martin Luther King once said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And so, I think when we hear the impassioned remarks from my peers like Counselor Phillips and my other peers on the call tonight, it reminds me of why those words still resonate decades later. When we see innocent civilians being killed thousands of miles away, people we may have no relationship with, we don't share a common language, a common culture, common religion, does not matter because we are truly a global community. And the outpouring support for innocent civilians everywhere, no matter where they fall on the map, just demonstrates to me how important it is for us to continue to build community. So, I really want to support and echo remarks by all my colleagues tonight about Ukraine. And I do want to transition because amidst all of the incredibly depressing news, there are opportunities for us here to do our part and to support each other. For years, we haven't had a professional basketball team here in Salem, and this is an opportunity to take care of each other, get to know our neighbors, and to build community. And so, you can join me on Friday night. I'll be wearing my Salem Capitals T-shirt at the Salem Armory, where we will be welcoming the inaugural game for our team. You may not have heard of the Professional Basketball League, but that's with a capital P and a capital B, but that is a league just below the NBA, and they have about forty or so teams around the country. And we are now a part of this league. And they are selling family-friendly ticket prices, five or ten bucks a head, depending whether a senior, a military veteran, a youth, or what have you. This is a great opportunity for us to get to know each other. We've grown apart as a city because of this pandemic. There are so many people I used to meet with on the regular that I haven't been able to. But as our city and as our entire nation slowly reopens, this is a great opportunity to come together and support a common cause without politics, without polarization, just people getting together and watching a good old-fashioned basketball team. So, go Salem Capitals. And there still is time to buy your tickets at salemcapitalsbasketball.com. So, those are the remarks that I have for tonight, but thank you again to all my peers. It is so good to see you all and to hear your words of support and encouragement for people around the globe who are hurting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Bennett, I have a quick one that I forgot that Counselor Hoy, Counselor Gonzalez reminded me of. So, Jose, thank you so much for bringing up the proclamation that we're going to discuss. And congratulations to both the Neighborhood Association, Northgate, and Fay Wright. I believe that those were two of the original Neighborhood Associations that were created fifty years ago, and I'm sure that they're both looking forward to tonight's proclamation. The counselors in Ward Three, myself, as well as Ward Seven, both get to represent Fay Wright. I know they're very proud of tonight's proclamation.
Great, thank you. I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. Of course, first, I'll second everyone's positive comments about Mr. Powers. He's been a remarkable person to work with as mayor. I get to have an office close to his, and we meet fairly often and visit. He is as fine a gentleman and as smart a manager and successful a leader as I think we've had in the office, and I've known about a dozen of these city managers and worked with them in various capacities since the mid-1970s. And Mr. Powers is a real standout member of an incredible crew of people who have played this really tremendous leadership role in our city. I'm really, like everyone else, I think, sorry to see him leaving, but celebrating his choice to move to the Upper Peninsula, I think it's the kind of place that will find him, just a fantastic new yupper, yuper, whatever you guys are calling yourselves up there these days. I think it'll be a place that you can spend a lot of quality time with like-minded people. Mr. Powers, I wish you the very, very best. I look forward to visiting you at some point up there. It's a beautiful part of the country, so. Congratulations on such a tremendous legacy of service you've given us, your presumably your last city manager role. I also want to let you know that Salem lost a former city employee and community volunteer on February 20th. Linda Berman served in both roles for many years. As a long-term employee, she led communication efforts for decades as the city's Public Information Officer. Linda was hired by the city in April 1977 as Public Information Officer in the city manager's office, and that's when I met her. I was a reporter on the Capital Journal. I'd met her before that. She was a reporter over at The Statesman. But I've known her for many, many years, just an outstanding person. In 2002, the position was reclassified to a Public Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator, and she served in that position until she retired in 2010, after thirty-two years, ten months of service to this city. In addition to her communications work, Linda was instrumental establishing the city's Sister City Program. She coordinated international visits, and I can testify to that. I was, I got to go on one of those visits to Japan. She was remarkable. In fact, she is revered in Kaua Gooey. She and her husband, Arthur, are absolutely just revered in our sister city, Kaua Gooey. She assisted many student groups who visited the United States, and she also worked with our sister city boards. Following retirement, Linda and her husband, Arthur, remained actively involved with the Salem-Kaua Gooey sister city relationship. I hope you'll all join me in sending condolences to Arthur, as well as the rest of her family. She truly will be missed. I also attended, along with Gretchen Bennett, attended her funeral today, and it was, it was really inspiring. She was a tremendous, tremendous employee here in the mayor and manager's office and for the city of Salem. That's mine. Anyone left on anything? Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, oh, yeah, and you get to talk too, Mr. Powers. I thought this was your last day. At some reason, I thought we just cut you right off. Go ahead.
Yeah, you can't keep me quiet tonight. I do, first of all, want to extend my condolences to the Berman family and deep debt of gratitude for the work that they've done. It's difficult to say goodbye during these challenging times in our world. But I do feel a need to thank you all. This is my final meeting with you. I will miss our Monday nights together. After thirty-six years in city and county management, I am retiring. While I'm not looking forward to six months of snow, my wife and I are moving back to Michigan's Upper Peninsula to be near our three children. Working with you, working with city council over the past six-plus years, working with the city's 1,200-plus employees, our partners such as the Salem Housing Authority, has truly been a highlight. Six years that really will be unforgettable for me. The Council Manager Plan works in Salem. Partnership of policy leadership by city council and policy implementation by city staff is critical to doing the difficult, messy work of governing and managing an Oregon's second-largest city. We've been through a total solar eclipse, an algae attack to our drinking water, the local impacts of the national homelessness emergency, a global pandemic, protests, including a few that turned violent, a damaging ice storm, and other events that challenged us. Through each one, the city kept serving and protecting the community. At the same time, we made progress on priorities essential to maintaining and improving the quality of life for all in Salem. And your annual, our annual community reports provide a summary of the work we've done together. I was truly fortunate to have the benefit of continuing the good work of my predecessor, Linda Norris. I wish you success in selecting Salem's next city manager who can help city council continue to make progress on the policies, services, and infrastructure vital to Salem. And I know you'll support the interim city manager, Kristen Rutherford. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and Counselor Anderson, for bringing me to Salem and for our six-plus years together. Thank you to past Mayor Peterson and past council presidents Nanki and McCoyd, and to past Counselor Lewis for voting to bring me to Salem. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, Counsel President Hoy, for stepping off the House floor, and Counselor Phillips for your kind words at my farewell event, and to the mayor and counselors for your comments tonight. Jane and I thank you, and thank Salem for giving us the opportunity to spend time here in the best part of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. You will be missed. Okay, we're going to move on then to proclamations. On February 14th of 1972, the city council adopted the Neighborhood Planning Program Guideline Policy Number One. Northgate Neighborhood Association in North Salem was recognized by the city council on February 28th, 1972, and the Fay Wright Neighborhood Association in South Salem was recognized by the city council on April 24th, 1972. I'm going to present the proclamation. Northgate Neighborhood is represented by Kateen Bayard Mentram, Fay Wright by Blake Schalid. Blake, I hope I said that right. Good. Okay. Whereas residents of the city of Salem, Oregon, recognize the unique and significant differences in various areas of our city, and whereas members of the Salem City Council understand the importance of good communication and outreach with all residents, and whereas members of the Salem City Council know that neighbors working together can be an effective and healthy influence on the quality of life in our community, and whereas the Salem Neighborhood Association Program was adopted by the city council in 1972 as the first Neighborhood Association Program in Oregon and among the first in the nation, and whereas the Neighborhood Association Program has served the Salem community as a whole for the past fifty years, and whereas the city council wishes to join the people of Salem in celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Salem Neighborhood Association Program, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim the year of 2022 as Salem Neighborhood Association Program's 50th anniversary and invite the community to join me in recognizing and applauding the Salem Neighborhood Association Program on this special occasion, and wishing it the best for continued success in the representation of its neighbors as well as its contributions to the residents of Salem dated this 28th day of February 2022. Did either of you neighborhood guys want to say anything? Bear, did you want to say something? Unmute yourself first.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great. Thank you for inviting me to share the celebration of Northgate 50th anniversary as Chair of Northgate Neighborhood Association. And Keta and I were members, and then all of a sudden in September 2020, the executive board basically all quit together, except for the land use chair. So, we decided, out of the romantic idea and also all the issues that needed to be worked on, we wanted to save it from a near-death experience after fifty years. So, we've worked hard because there weren't hardly any members at that time. So, we found ways to attract people by having meetings, even Zoom meetings, to share different people talking about issues in the city, which seemed to attract other people to join in and discover ideas and share ideas.
And being kind.
And being kind to them also, and allowing people to, you know, share ideas. So, we were able to build up membership, and it's exciting to keep it growing. And some of our accomplishments in the last year and a half or two years, one is Northgate Park, which needed a lot of help. There were tennis courts and basketball courts that were full of weeds and
Cracks.
But there weren't any cracks in weeds, and we didn't have any pot playground areas, so we decided to create a survey around the neighbors, and there were a lot of young children, so we got an idea that they wanted children play areas and pots, and they wanted the pavement done and lighting, for instance. So, we were able to work it out, so all those things have been accomplished, which is really great. Then, also, we were asked by the city and the executive chair to create an entry sign at 258 exit off the freeway on Portland Road. It has been designed and has been approved by the city council, and we're waiting for it to be placed.
Great.
And let's see, yeah, the sign there right now is forty-year-old, so it's pretty derelict-looking, not a good entry monument. And so, we're still working on the homeless issues around here, which, you know, definitely impact Northgate. And there's a lot of work to be done, and we're keeping going, and we see hope, and we want the Northgate to go for another fifty years and beyond. Thank you.
Great, Bear, we wish you the very best. Blake, how about Fay Wright?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Bennett. I'm Blake Schalid and Chair of the Fay Wright Neighborhood Association. Thanks for the proclamation and for recognizing Fay Wright for this wonderful achievement. Thanks a lot to the folks who had the foresight fifty years ago to form neighborhood associations in Salem, including ours. You know, we think that neighborhoods and associations are really the building blocks of a city and provide a venue to voice common interests and help foster a sense of community, and we think Fay Wright does just that. Over the years, we've helped organize and provide that voice to neighborhood issues for issues such as land use, park improvements, zoning, developments, community safety concerns, celebrations, among many other activities. Just a quick thanks also to our city counselors, Vanessa and Trevor, for your hard work and help with communication and advocacy for our city and for our neighborhood issues, and also to all the city counselors that have represented Fay Wright in the past. You know, thanks to Fay Wright members and officers for their volunteer service and continuing efforts and hard work over the years. It takes a lot to keep any organization going for fifty years. Just to also thank our current vice chair, Sean Range, Sue He Cox, land use chair, Bev Eklund, our secretary, Sally Cook, who's been really a wonderful resource for the city and for our neighborhood, and Michael Slater, who's our former land use chair and on the board now too. Thanks to Annie Batte for helping organize this and for service over the years, and certainly to Irma too, for all she does to assist us in other neighborhood associations. We look forward to fifty-plus more years of success as a neighborhood association, as our neighborhood and our city continues to grow. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Blake. Really wish you all the best out there.
Mayor Bennett, quick question for Blake. Is it okay?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
So thank you, Mayor Bennett, and both chairs. Congratulations on this proclamation, well-deserved for your volunteer time and work. Blake, is there an event coming up later this week in terms of like the Fay Wright doing a community walk in one of the neighborhoods? Or is that next week?
There is, it's coming up, and I actually, I don't have the date written for me, but yeah, it's a good, it's a good note, thank you. One of our goals for our year are for our neighborhood associations to do park walks for each of our parks in our neighborhood association to go and kind of do a survey and identify any potential improvements, you know, what's good, what could be improved, and that's what we'll be doing over the course of the summer. So.
So folks can find out on your website? Is that how they'd find out about it?
Yes, yeah, we'll put some of those up on our social media, our Facebook site.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move then to public comment. We have a substantial amount of public comment this evening, and
Mr. Mayor, did you want to do presentations first?
Oops, I guess I did. I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, we have the Human Rights Commission update from Angelo Aradondo, the chair. Angelo, go ahead.
Hi, mayor and council members, good evening. Oh, first, can you hear me all?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Angelo Aradondo. I am a resident of Ward Two, and I'm the chair of our Human Rights Commission. I started my service on the commission as a junior in high school, and now I'm completing my fourth year of service in the commission as a chair. Tonight, I'm just providing a brief update on last year's accomplishments and a quick preview of the year to come. As you know, we recommended that you review the city's Human Rights Municipal Code to add housing status as a protected identity and other changes. We appreciate that you're now working on this request. As you know, we provided a response to a request from Mayor Bennett. We engage community members and each other, and each other provided over forty equity asks for increased diversity, equity and inclusion in Salem. We also provided, with that, an equity lens to help consider questions through the, excuse me, superiority of equity. And then community discrimination survey. As you know, we're in, I believe, our fourth year of our survey and in partnership with Sinsa Western Oregon University. We completed the third and largest to date study of discrimination experience in Salem. Information was instructed for future work on policy and practice. Last year, we assisted five people who reported bias and hate situations in the commission. We also received reports from the Salem Police Department of bias crime and incidents reported to the police department. Anytime a person experiences, this is a big concern for all of us and is one of the most important things that we do as a commission. We also held our annual transgender day of remembrance, which marks a somber annual recognition of all those around the world who have lost their lives due to anti-transgender violence. This year, we expect to continue many of those initiatives and develop a new program that we're calling Safe Spaces. The commission's LGBTQA plus intersectional rights task force is developing this program for people who manage publicly accessible places, such as businesses, and also things like parks. This program aims to help everybody be welcomed in Salem. Thank you for your time and for your support of your Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, Angelo, for all your work and for your long-term presence with the commission. It's really appreciated. Are there any questions? Comments? Okay, great. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to public comment. Okay, I'm gonna start, this is on agenda items only, and I'm gonna start with Carol Cottingham from Ward Two. You're given three minutes to speak. There's a timer on the screen. When the time hits, you're done. I'll turn you off, okay? So try to wrap it up real quick. Carol, go ahead. You're muted. There, try it again.
How about now? I'm using my phone and a computer to somehow get across. Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. I'm Carol Cottingham. I'm the newly-elected chair of the Historic Landmark Commission, and I'm here tonight commenting on the work plan and other items that are on the consent agenda. We received it with our twenty twenty-one annual report and twenty twenty-two work plan. In twenty twenty-one, in addition to regular historic designer view work, Landmarks Commission has continued to do work educating our community about Salem's history and help historic property owners fund projects through the Residential Toolbox Program, which is now in its twelfth year. Also, in twenty twenty-one, we added the Preservation Green Fund to the existing Residential Toolbox Grant Program. This program is going to continue to help historic property owners in Salem complete energy-efficient upgrades. The commission recently recognized Highland Neighborhood as one of Salem's newest short, excuse me, newest heritage neighborhoods, and we will be continuing to work with them in the upcoming year on some interesting projects. Also, we continue to expand our presence on social media and even on our older media, the KMUZ radio station, by sharing historic project updates as well as some fun history stories. Next month, we're launching the eighth annual historic photo contest. So if anyone is interested in capturing pictures of their favorite historic neighborhood or building in Salem, we'd love to submit those. And with that, again, thank you for having me tonight. The commission greatly appreciates Mayor and City Council for support the work of Historic Landmark Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you all doing this work. It's vitally important that we preserve the history of this community, and you all do a tremendous, tremendous job. Any questions? Again, thank you very much. Lynn Takata.
Mayor Bennett, this is Courtney. Lynn Takata has not yet joined our meeting.
Okay. You let me know when she does, and we'll put her in if we're still on this item. Annie?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi.
I'm Annie Batte. I am from Ward Three, and I'm the retired Neighborhood Services Counselor. I want to thank and congratulate the thousands of volunteers who have individually worked with neighborhood associations and put in thousands of hours. Oops, start my video, sorry, Courtney. Okay, okay. So thank you all the volunteers all over the years and the families of the volunteers as well. So you've made Salem a better place. We're a great place to begin with, but each person makes it better. So many things in Salem would not be here except for neighborhood associations, and we drive by those things every day, never knowing that it was volunteers that put in the hours to make things happen. Neighborhood Association's motto is get connected, get results. So if you have a good idea, you can go to your neighborhood association and they will work with you. They don't do it for you, they work with you. There are no dues. It's not a neighborhood association where they tell you what color to paint your house. It's just neighbors getting together to do great things in this city. Things they have done are things like created parks, bioswales, community gardens, collaborated to provide sidewalk linkages, cleaned creeks and streets, beautified schools and properties and needs, initiated projects that became urban renewal areas, as well as things that started with neighborhoods and then became neighborhood watch, neighbor-to-neighbor, and lots of things like that. Twice, we've been named an All-American City, and Linda Berman, who Mayor Bennett spoke about, was key to those two times that we were the All-American City in coordinating all of that. Neighborhood USA named Northeast Neighbors the Neighborhood of the Year for the restoration of the Buckner House in nineteen ninety-five. So thank you, Irma Dowd, for being the Neighborhood Services Coordinator now. You are phenomenal, working with and caring for our eighteen neighborhood associations. I want to end with a quote from Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. And thank you to all the city councilors. We've had neighborhood association folks move up into council, commissions, state legislature, and one person. Each person can make a difference. Thanks, Chuck, for being at Linda's memorial today, too, that just made a difference, and I'm gonna get cut off. So thanks, all you neighborhood folks. It was a privilege to work with you.
Thank you, Annie. It was a privilege for, I think, all of them to work with you as well. Tremendous work you did.
Thank you. And I'm gonna let Arthur know what you said about Linda, too, in the meeting.
She was, she was just the best. Is Ken here?
Yes, I'm here. If I'm unmuted and
You're unmuted, bring your, let us see your happy face. There you are.
There we go. Thank you, mayor and councilors. I'm Ken Simil, a Salem resident, homeowner and Northeast Neighbors. I have lived in Salem seventy-three years and resided in the Nen neighborhood for seventy-two of those years. I currently serve as vice chair of the Nen Neighborhood Association and have been a Nen board member for twenty-seven of your fifty years of existence. I'm addressing the new city parkland that Mayor Bennett particularly was involved with, that was purchased by the city from the north campus of Oregon State Hospital and between Twenty-third and Twenty-Fifth Streets along D Street. For reasons that follow, the Board of Nen feels that the neighborhood association boundary at the former State Hospital North Campus should be one that runs north and south through the middle of the new D Street Park. Since this was state land, it was not in any neighborhood association. Now it will be, it's been privately developed, the Jory Development and the park, and those will be parts of the city of Salem in a neighborhood. There is a current precedence established by, for a shared park boundary between Salem Neighborhood Associations. I lived for a year on Lee Street, just south of Deepwood. The Salem Deepwood Museum and Garden Park property is shared by both the Scan and the Cessna Neighborhood Associations. From Mission Street south, the Scan-Cessna boundary runs through the Deepwood Park property and not along a street or any obvious feature. And I'd like to screen share a map of Nen because this is an issue in the new park that we're talking about. Let me bring that on here. I think I'm getting it, but I'm not sure. Okay, let's try that. Nen is one of the older neighborhoods. We have properties going back to the eighteen nineties. As the neighborhood grew out, seven public recreational sites were created throughout the neighborhood, and I've got those labeled with these pink numbers here, starting down near State Street. Number one, it was actually between Twelfth and Thirteenth, between Marion and Center. Number two there was Olinger Park and next to Mill Creek. Number three is way up at the top, actually partially in the Oregon State Fairgrounds parking lot, but the city-owned property behind one of the streets.
Ken, I apologize, time is up. Do you want to just, what you're showing us are parks that have been in Nen and some are not here anymore, is that pretty much?
All five of these have disappeared. So we're left now with two parks. Inglewood Park, which is an historic park, and a little bit of McCray. This is the new park right here that is adjacent to our property. And the other thing I want to point out about Nen is our boundary is largely on Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Fifth from State Street North, and it's east of Twenty-Fourth Street at the top where the State Fairgrounds is. This is between Evergreen and Twenty-Fourth.
Okay, Ken, well, I think the council got the message. Thank you. If you want to send that illustration you have out, that might be helpful, but we'll be talking about this later, and I think you'll want to, I'm sure, talk with your counselor on this one as well.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thanks, Ken, very much. Is Peter here? There he is. Unmute yourself there, Peter. There we go.
I actually wanted to speak on the resolution about the nuclear weapons, not this one. Are we on that now?
Yep, you're on whatever you want to talk about.
Oh, all right, well, fine, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And members of the council, I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you again and to speak about this resolution. My name is Peter Bergell. I live at eighteen fifty Saginaw Street in Salem. And at jurid mitigation, Mr. Mayor, and with the assistance of Mr. Atchison, we bring the present resolution before you. Borrows heavily from the Oregon Legislature's twenty nineteen joint, Senate Joint Resolution Five, which easily passed both houses, but has been updated to reflect the changes that have occurred since that passage. As we nervously watch developments around Ukraine in which the two largest nuclear arsenals tensely face each other, we are reminded forcefully how close we are, we all are, to total global destruction should nuclear war break out. So this resolution calls upon our elected officials, representatives, to take a series of steps to put the world on the path toward nuclear weapons abolition. And I emphasize that this must not be viewed as an unrealistic dream, but as a vital national security measure. That's really what it is, and it affects Salem as much as every other city in the world. Likewise, it is not a call for unilateral disarmament, but rather a go to our government and the governments of the other nuclear armed nations to take a vital step towards self-preservation. As I noticed the last time I was before you, many cities in a few states have already passed resolutions such as this one, and I hope and trust that Salem will today become another voice in the worldwide chorus calling for nuclear weapons abolition in the name of ourselves, our children, and all the other forms of life on our planet. So thank you very much for your attention. Really appreciate it. And there are a couple of little glitches that crept in, in the whereases. So I'm not sure whether you want to try and fix those or, you know, how you want to deal with that. But some of the things that Mr. Atchison and I talked about have somehow didn't quite get into the final version that's on the website.
What's the, do you have the glitches right in front of you?
Yeah, I can, I can look at those.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you just give them to us real quick?
Okay. In the first, in the second, let's see, where is it here? In the second thing, let me, let me find it here. Where is it? Well, maybe I don't have it.
Yeah, I'll tell you what we can do.
In the second one, Mr. Mayor, the one that says about the fifty-five hundred weapons, and says it's the most lethal, that, that, that's wording that crept back in from the, from the twenty nineteen version, and it's
What do you want it to say, Peter? What do you want it to say?
You could say one of the most lethal, or the second most lethal, or something like that.
Okay, one of the, okay.
Right.
What else you got?
And the other one is, there was a paragraph put in about number eight of the whereases or so that refers to people here from Salem.
Yes.
And that really ought to come in below the one about the people from And that really ought to come in below the one about uh the people from Oregon that was in the original resolution because otherwise it doesn't quite make sense.
I don't see the where is that one?
That one's quite a bit down, uh probably about two-thirds of the way down. There's one about other Oregonians who have participated and it was supposed to come in right under that.
So can I comment, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Phillips? So I think what he, what he's asking for is to switch the ordering. So it would go the, there whereas the United States, the next one would be whereas Oregonians and then the third one after that would be whereas Salem. Is that correct, Mr. Bergel?
Correct. Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips.
So you have the language you'll, you'd like to put in?
Oh, it's there. It's just in the wrong place.
You know, I, I'm not talking to you. Just a minute. Sure. No, that's okay.
Yeah, I have it. I, I, I understand and I can make that uh
What I'll do is, I'm gonna make the motion on this and then uh you can, you can uh put in a substitute or amend it, whichever you prefer. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
We'll get this taken care of. You know how to fix it.
If, Mr. Mayor, if you may, we can, we can just consider those scrivengers errors and make corrections.
Excellent. We'll just do it that way then. Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Bergel for bringing this to us. He talked to me about this and I know several others a few months ago and had been planning to bring this. I just really appreciate the fact that you followed through with it and that you brought it to us. It's really important and I'm really grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I am too. Thank you very much, Mr. Bergel. I told you my own personal feelings about it at the last meeting. I feel very strongly about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and particularly after watching the news this evening, good Lord. It, it's just amazing in our lifetime where we think we actually have existential problems with the climate and here we are about to be nuked. I don't know. Tom? You're gonna apologize for telling us the climate thing is existential compared to this?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not. I am gonna join you and uh Mr. Hoy uh thanking Peter and I see you there too Alice and thank you Alice. Uh, uh, for, we've talked about this number of times in the past and this other issues and I really appreciate Peter your moral compass that you keep bringing in front of the council on all sorts of issues and um, uh, I appreciate that very much and it's good. We sometimes get lost in the, the business in front of us of just operating the city. So thank you so much for keeping us uh apprised of the wider issues. I
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, and I'll continue to do that.
Great, thank you. Thank you again. Anyone else? All right, uh Leslie Paulson. Leslie, are you here?
I am here, okay? Let me start my video real quick. Just real quick, I am here for an item that was kind of tabled, but I'm gonna just go ahead and run through this really quickly. Can I share a screen with you?
Yep.
Hey, let me go down to uh share screen. What I'm here to do is we, our Neighborhood Association, which is Nen, has been working on, let's see, share screen, so I can get through there really fast. We are having a kind of a, a little, a little spin with our neighborhood, our neighbors. So we basically would like to ask for some equity. Our Neighborhood Association has two parts and our competition, NESCA, has, will be getting four with this particular proposal. It is very, it makes me very sad because I sat in the neighborhood plan with the rugby players who advocated for saving that particular field by the State Hospital. And one of the sadnesses that we experienced, at least I do, is losing the green space. So I am continuing to advocate to at least make sure that the D Street Park get included in Nen. And even though it's in Ward One, and let me see what else I have written down here. Um and the other thing is to advocate for changing the eastern boundaries of Nen to Twenty-Fifth Street, so it would be a straight line instead of a little zigzag that goes between Market and Center. And so let me just quickly run this thing right here. This is our info and I'll post it with this there. And this is the card competition, which is not uh been a lot of fun for us. Um this was our neighborhood plan, just really quick. And this is the ward and this is what confuses us is because the park was put in Ward One, although it's being assigned to NESCA. We're very confused about that. And this is when I'm talking about the Twenty-Fifth Street. You can see that it is kind of crooked. And if you did twenty-five all the way, it would be a lot easier for the east side of it. So basically, that's any questions? I'm going to just stop my presentation.
Yeah, are there any questions for Ms. Paulson? Okay, Leslie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Hoy, the next speaker will be Steve Anderson, followed by John Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so Steve Anderson's up first.
Got it.
Good day, Mr. Anderson. Yeah, Mayor and City Council, thank you so much. We appreciate your support for Neighborhood Associations and the leadership there. I remember working with Mayor Bennett when he was our uh local representative on council and some of the guidance and direction he provided, so kudos to all of you and also seconding uh Annie's comments. Um, and also to Mr. Powers for his leadership and his willingness to reach out to the community directly and to engage the administration with the neighborhood. So thank you, Mr. Powers. I'm here tonight by assignment. I'm reaching out to you to ask on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. I'm Steve Anderson, West Salem Neighborhood Association Land Use Chair, Ward Eight. Uh about item six point F, to be called up for council review. Our chair has made a formal request already, but on February twenty-third, the Neighborhood Association took a motion and a second from the floor and voted to support the request of City Council to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to City Council. This is item file number twenty-two dash eighty-seven for twenty-one hundred Doakes Ferry. Absent our City Counselor and uh Sisters and other councilor out of town, we request the appeal directly to City Council tonight. Primary reason centers on the issue of new information. Five minutes after the record had closed, staff produced a report which had new correspondence from State Agency, new traffic analysis, which we were unable to, to comment on to the Planning Commission. This was a central part of their deliberation and their decision-making. And we felt like we may have seen a different solution, but clearly this information was new. It was provided outside of the period for the Neighborhood Association to comment.
Mr. Anderson, if I could interrupt you for one moment, I apologize. But I'll commit to you to pulling this up for a hearing. Since you, you do not have a city counselor over in your neighborhood, I'll, I will pull this tonight for a hearing. I think it would be better for you to come back when we actually do hear it and present your arguments. I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be best to hear the arguments tonight, but I'll, I'm happy to pull it up for you and uh have a hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, I agree with Counselor Hoy. I was gonna do that too. So we'll take care of that uh at the item. Thank you, and I don't want to put you in an ex parte situation, so I'll leave it at that and just say again, your, your service, your support of neighborhoods, community involvement has been very, very helpful. And we particularly appreciate the work of your staff in working with us on many important issues. So thank you and I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay. John Pearson.
Thank you. Um, I would like to first thank you for considering, considering this resolution. And thanks for allowing me this opportunity to urge you to vote in favor of it. I am here on behalf of the Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility, which is part of the Coalition of the International Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War. The Nobel Peace Prize recipient in nineteen eighty-six. IPPNW is also a co-founder of ICANN, which is the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, which also received the Nobel Peace Prize, in this case in twenty seventeen. There are currently about thirteen thousand nuclear weapons held by nine nations, ninety percent of which are under the control of Russia and the USA. Unfortunately, several hundreds of these on both sides are on trigger alert, meaning that they are ready to go at the push of a button. These weapons are in land-based open silos and onboard submarines in the Pacific and around the coast of Europe. While sophisticated studies show us that just a few hundred Hiroshima-sized weapons would cause the end of civilization as we know it, each of these modern weapons are multiple times more powerful than those dropped on Hiroshima, so that one's modern submarine might carry thousands of times the destructive power of the Hiroshima bomb. Over the years, many treaties have been signed intending to reduce the number of these weapons and to prevent the proliferation of nations having nuclear weapons. They have had various, varied success. The number of weapons has decreased from about sixty-five thousand and a bit six to the current thirteen thousand I mentioned above. However, the number of nuclear arms states is increasing, which obviously increases the level of all risks. However, the number of nuclear, sorry, I've said that. At last led by non-nuclear nations, international efforts have finally culminated in the United Nations Treaty referred to in the resolution before you. Having been ratified by the required number of nations, it is now international law. Former government representatives such as Rob McNamara, Henry Kissinger, and former Senator Sam Nunn have urged complete abolition of nuclear weapons. In a recent papal statement, the current Pope has declared the abolition of nuclear weapons a moral obligation. The International Red Cross and Red President Organization has declared abolition of nuclear weapons a top priority. There are many others.
I didn't get that.
Besides besides uh
Sorry, Mr. Pearson, time's up on this.
Okay.
Thank you. We got the message.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Georgia Starr Davis.
Hello, my name's Georgia Starr Davis and I'm speaking on behalf of Oregon PS, or Oregon Peace Works member and I'm speaking on behalf of the Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility in support of the amendment or in support of the resolution as well. As a recent participant in the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, I, twenty twenty ICANN Academy, nuclear weapons are an issue I'm passionate about. Nuclear weapons have been a threat to humanity since their conception, but in the last few decades, after the end of the Cold War, people in my generation who have not lived through um the threat, who have not lived through the Cold War, um have not considered the threat of nuclear weapons. Within the last few days, as we've watched Russia invade Ukraine, this has brought forth this issue of nuclear weapons into the consciousness of my generation. With reports of Russian forces having captured Chernobyl and the potential amendment to Belarus's constitution to allow them to host nuclear weapons, we are advancing into an extremely alarming moment in history. We cannot continue uh to put off addressing the issue of nuclear weapons. The time is now to address this issue. The adoption of Resolution number twenty twenty twenty-two dash ten by the City of Salem is a crucial step in signaling to Congress that we need to sign the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons. I learned the, the importance of this treaty, the TPNW, after participating in the twenty twenty-one Hiroshima ICANN Academy and hearing the stories of Hibakasha Koko Kondo, who is a prominent nuclear weapon survivor from the bomb that was dropped on Hiroshima, Japan. And also testimony of Aboriginal and Australian military victims of uranium mining and testing in Marlinga, Australia. When we think of nuclear weapons, the bombs dropped on Nagasaki and Hiroshima are the two instances that come to mind for most people. But globally, other people are victims of nuclear weapons through the mining, testing, use, or disposal of waste materials. Hearing Koko's story that day on August sixth nineteen forty-five, when the Enola Gay dropped a nuclear bomb on Hiroshima was heartbreaking. She told of how the rubble of her home had smothered both her, her and her mother and how her mother labored to dig them out of the rubble before the firestorm engulfed their home in flames. Later on, when she went to the US to study and uh told her fiance that she was a Hiroshima survivor, his family pressured her to cut off the, or to end the engagement. With nuclear weapons, if you survive the, the initial impact of the bomb, you are not free from the implications of the bomb. Sickness and the fear from others of what your body contains lingers like a perpetual scarlet letter, a reminder of what transpired that terrible day. What Koko and others experienced, no one else should ever have to experience. Thank you for considering this resolution.
Thank you, and thank you very much for uh representing a new generation looking at this issue. It's been uh hopelessly avoided by your generation and, and many others. So it, it's just great to to hear you talk about this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and thank you for considering this resolution.
Okay. Jake Krishman.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, City Councilors, staff and fellow Salem residents. My name is Jake Krishnan and I'm a resident of Salem and the Chair of South Gateway Neighborhood Association. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. First of all, hardy congratulations on the fiftieth anniversary of the Neighborhood Association Program. Special congratulations to Northgate and Fairright on this momentous occasion. I became involved with the South Gateway Neighborhood Association about almost immediately on becoming a resident in Salem. And it has been a most welcoming and enriching experience. The opportunity to participate in many civic matters impacting residents and the ability to provide inputs has been very, very, is a very powerful example of democracy in action. As the City Council is aware, we at Cigna have been extremely active in providing our opinions, inputs and feedback on various issues impacting the neighborhood. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Irma Dowd, Neighborhood Program Coordinator and Counselor Long for, what for, for diligently providing information, support and advocacy. Equal thanks to the Police Department and thanks to all the Cigna board members, past and present, and volunteers for spending countless hours. I thank the residents and the board for providing this opportunity to serve and strongly encourage all residents to actively participate through the Neighborhood Associations. With a higher emphasis on development projects, it is vital that residents voice their opinions through the Neighborhood Association. After all, it is our city and we owe it to our families, children and co-residents to be mindful. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to the consent calendar, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm approving of the consent calendar with the exception of items three point two A pulled by Counselor Phillips, three point two B pulled by Counselor Anderson, three point two D pulled by Counselor Hoy, three point two E pulled by Counselor Anderson, and three point three A pulled by Counselor Nordike.
Three point three A you said, by Counselor Nordike?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Second by Phillips?
Second, yes.
Okay.
That leaves us with item three point one A, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two draft City Council Minutes. Three point one B, the draft, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two draft City Council Minutes. Item three point two C, dedication of a reserved strip of land on Doughton Street South as public right-of-way. Item three point three B, an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for the collection of survey-controlled point information for the Oregon MAP project. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay, any discussion? All right, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton is absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we have no public hearings. We'll go to special orders of business. Uh we'll start with the five A. Counselor Hoy, this is deliberations only on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I move approval of the subdivision with conditions one through twenty as listed in the November third decision, plus the following additional conditions of approval. The applicant shall preserve the significant trees on lots forty, forty-one, forty-three, forty, I'm sorry, fifty-eight through sixty, sixty-two through sixty-four, and ninety-six. The applicant may either eliminate these lots by dedicating as common space, common open space, or incorporating them into the homestead lot. The applicant may choose to redesign their plan prior to the final plat submission to add up to ten additional lots elsewhere on the site so long as all other applicable development standards are met. And the applicant shall relocate the pedestrian path between Hillficker and Ramsey to ensure it does not impact any significant trees. And as proposed by the applicant, as a condition of phase one, the applicant shall construct speed pumps on Albert Street Southeast to city standards in locations approved by the Public Works Department. And as a condition of phase two, the applicant shall install and always stop at the intersection of Twelfth Street Southeast and Lansford Drive Southeast.
Who's the second here? I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made this motion for the purposes of discussion. It is the a similar uh motion that we had anticipated at the last meeting. Although now that we have a significant amount of new information that we had, we had sent staff out to um obtain, I I wanted to have the opportunity to be able to discuss that amongst council. And so that was, that's the reason for my motion. It's basically staff recommendation with uh um some added elements as discussed in the past. So that's what's on the table.
Okay. Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you get into discussion, I'd like to just kind of set the table a little bit as far as the legal framework for the application.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
So Dan Atchison, City Attorney. So counsel, this is a quasi judicial land use decision. Basically means the city council is obligated to apply only the applicable criteria to the application. And the city cannot apply policies or goals that were not adopted as land use regulations at the time the application was submitted. So issues that do not apply to the applicable criteria cannot be used as a basis for the decision. This is consistent for all the quasi judicial land use decisions the city makes. Most typically, the city council only hears these types of applications on appeal, so they come to you less frequently than other types of decisions. The property is owned for residential use and the proposed subdivision is a permitted use on the property. The city cannot deny an application for housing just because we think a different use or non-use of the property would be better. The needed housing laws that were discussed earlier during the hearing apply to this application. The purpose of the needed housing laws is to ensure that housing applications that meet the clear and objective criteria are approved efficiently and without undue cost and delay. These laws essentially require that the applicant be given the option only to have clear and objective criteria be applied to the application. And the city's standards, procedures, and conditions of approval cannot discourage needed housing through unreasonable cost and delay. That's the statutory requirements. In this case, the applicant is entitled and has requested only to have clear and objective criteria applied to the application. In regard to the significant trees on the property, the applicant is required to preserve the significant trees unless removal is undertaken pursuant to a permit or a variance or approved under a tree conservation plan. And that's Salem Revise Code eight oh eight zero one five. The applicant in this case is seeking to remove significant trees pursuant to a tree conservation plan. Under the TCP, significant trees must be retained unless there is no reasonable design alternative. And the applicant in their final written argument and through their earlier testimony stated that uh they believe there is no reasonable design alternative that would allow the site to be developed with adequate lot density and preservation of the homestead and required construction of the streets and sidewalks. And that preserving some trees necessarily means other trees will need to be removed. And further, they've also argued that the reasonable design alternative is not a clear and objective standard and cannot be used as a basis for denial because of the needed housing statutes. Staff's conclusion or response to that is the applicant has correctly determined there is no reasonable design alternative. That is staff's opinion. And therefore, the tree conservation plan may be approved with the removal of the significant trees as indicated by the applicant. In regard to the clear and objective standard criteria, that the code does require that significant trees be preserved. That is the clear and objective element. And in our opinion, the ability to apply a reasonable design alternative is a alternative approach that they can, that applicant take if they desire. In this case, as I noted, staff has determined that there are no reasonable design alternatives that would allow them to develop the property as they as they applied for. In this case, city council may approve the application consistent with the staff recommendation or with the motion that's on the table. Or determine that one or more of the criteria are not met and deny the application. Thank you.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Atchison, if I may?
Yeah.
Who who gets to to decide what reasonable is? Is that our, within our judgment? Is there a, is there a case law that guides us? What what's reasonable?
There there is no definition of reasonable in the code, so city council, as the governing body, gets to interpret what reasonable means with it within reason, so to speak.
So helpful, thank you. So in in my mind, just to follow up, and this is kind of a question that I had last time. I had a suggestion to the developer that there were, there was a way to to save a significant number of trees if they just eliminated a couple, three lots. In my mind, with the size, that's reasonable. Am I allowed to make that judgment?
That is a conclusion. It's not really a judgment, and that's a, you know, a subjective judgment on your part. So I keep, that's not really a legal question that I can answer. You've heard the testimony that they've submitted, as well as the oral testimony at the hearing in regard to why they believe there are no reasonable design alternatives, and I would have you review that in making your decision.
Thank you.
Mister Mister Atchison, I'm curious, do we have clear and objective criteria built into then our code that that would uh meet the statutory requirement? Do we have that available?
Not in all cases, no. And and Lisa, you Lisa Anderson can can chime in here, but our code was written well before the needed housing statutes were in place and have been amended many times over the years. We have some subjective elements to our criteria. I will say that some of the state laws governing subdivision development are also subjective. So when we're working with an applicant to put together a subdivision application and to review it on our end, we are trying to find ways to apply these standards in a clear and objective manner.
In in your judgment, uh, since it, we're pretty open to allowing everybody to have some judgment on this thing. Are we just headed for Luba? Is that what's going to happen here? Is that whatever we do goes to Luba and it will come back to us with some instruction? I I view this, I guess, somewhat like the Costco situation where uh the council said no, they were told you can't do that, and they clearly couldn't do that. Is that what's happening here potentially?
That that's a very subjective question, and to that I would say no, this is, this is different uh in in many aspects than than that application.
Yeah, it's not a, it's it's somebody trying to use their land a certain way. I am not sure what the difference is other than the use. Is it just the fact situations or what are the differences?
The code provisions that are being applied to this application are different than are being applied there. There's different standards at play.
Okay, okay. Were the standards more strict in the Costco situation or clearer in the Costco? This one seems to be very squishy.
In the in the previous application for the Costco, there there was a twelve-year-old decision that basically guided us and had and put some sideboards on on what we could do. That was a site plan application. It's not a subdivision application. It's really two rather different things.
Okay. What's your legal advice on this then? What what should we be doing?
Apply the criteria, look at the facts, and apply apply them to the criteria like you always should.
The criteria and and you, those the clear and objective criteria are where in our in our code then? Where do we, where do we go?
The the staff report lays out the criteria that were applied to the project and and lays out our staff recommendation as well as the applicant's statement and the the different folks from the neighborhood who have testified and submitted written testimony as well.
Okay.
As as noted in the staff report, staff is recommending approval because they believe they've met the criteria.
Okay. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got some legal questions, Dan. And maybe it's just uh was uh, I don't know, it doesn't mean anything, but you originally said the applicant believes there is no reasonable alternative. And then you said the staff has determined there's no reasonable opinion. So I look a reasonable alternative, excuse me, so what what is there that that the the developer has said, oh, there's no reasonable alternative to uh destroying the trees that we want to destroy?
So in in quasi judicial, sorry, Dan Atchison, City Attorney, in quasi judicial land use applications, the burden of proof is on the applicant. They need to show that they have met the applicable criteria. Staff's job, and I get to explain this to Planning Commission tomorrow, so thank you for the question, Counselor. Staff's job is to review the application, review the facts, review the testimony, and make a recommendation to the decision maker, and that's what staff has done. Staff can make, you want to call it a determination or opinion, it really doesn't matter, it's staff's opinion, as well as it's the applicant's opinion. The decision maker, in this case, the city council, gets to make that final determination.
Thank you, Mr. Atchison. Again, I'm sorry, Tom Anderson, City Council Ward Two. So I want to also go back to Counselor Hoy's question, and that is you know, you talked about something about conclusion, it's our conclusion, and and it seems to me that that from our perspective, uh, we've got some latitude in what is reasonable and we can make a conclusion, it is a reasonable, uh, uh, we can go with the staff recommendation that they have determined there is no reasonable alternative. Or we can say in our own mind, because of this and this reasons, we uh believe there are some reasonable alternatives, or the other way around, excuse me, we believe that they have not met their burden of proof to show there are no reasonable alternatives. Is that a fair assessment of how we could look and judge at these things?
Yes, that's the the position that the city council is in right now.
Okay, then, uh, a couple more for Mr. Atchison, Mr. Mayor, and then all the other counselors, and I might have some for planning. The needed housing uh uh criteria and regulations, one of the arguments and um and I and I really thank Mr. Santana for his two letters that really laid out the issues here. One one of the arguments is, we already know from our planning that we've got plenty of single-family housing. Our shortage is in multiple family houses. We have an uh, we have more single-family housing in our planning uh materials than we do uh that is required under the law. So how does that affect, uh, if it does, how does that affect their decision about needed housing? What, because what in effect, what is being provided here? Single-family housing that we already have enough of.
I I need to be careful because I can't add new facts to the record, nor can any of us, nor can staff. So I won't get into a discussion of of the housing market right now. But basically, the needed housing applies to a definition. Our code defines needed housing as pretty much any type of housing. So it meets the definition of needed housing, and therefore the statute applies to it.
Okay, so in other words, uh, it's really not within our purview. It would not be reasonable for us as the council to say it's providing needed housing, but it's providing needed housing that we already have too much of. The the question just says, is this, does this fit the definition of needed housing under the code? Or the applicable, okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and City Attorney, Dan Atchison. I at the risk of being redundant, I I need some help. I'm I'm fourteen months into this. I'm not as experienced as our council president, Chris Hoy, or an attorney like Tommy Anderson. Um, the question that Tom, not Tom, Counselor Hoy asked earlier, um, I mean, am I wrong to paraphrase that as saying like, you know, what's our role tonight? I mean, I know that you've described it and responded to to all of their questions, but I guess the way I would maybe paraphrase it so that I'm in sure that I'm understanding this is, you know, where is the gray area based on the criteria? You know, my understanding after reviewing this is that really it's about the significant trees that are about to be removed as as this application is, the motion is before us. Is is that the the main criteria-based gray area that that we're discussing right now?
I I circled in on the significant tree issue because I think that's one of the the primary issues that 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 was discussed at the hearing. There are obviously a whole set of criteria to be applied. Um, in in regard to your role, I believe Counselor Anderson at previous hearings and at the the hearing for this matter talked about city council's role being a broader policymaking body, and it is. But in this particular instance, you are acting as a quasi-judge and you're required to apply the criteria that in the same manner as the Planning Commission or the Planning Administrator does when they make a decision. This isn't a policy exercise here. This is a quasi judicial exercise.
Okay. So um, thank you for that clarification reminder of what this is. I guess I will just, I I'm not sure like how this this works. I apologize for not thinking of the question ahead of time, but is is now the the chance for us to discuss like our thoughts on this motion? And our, you know, what we're thinking? Okay.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, it is, it is my opinion that, you know, our role is to to weigh in on on the criteria. And while the community, you know, the facts, I don't want to add any new facts, but the facts that have come up are are very wide-ranging. The things that fit within the criteria that will ultimately go, you know, if it goes to Luba, would be discussed. In in my opinion, based on the training I've received from staff, is is the trees. So, you know, the significant trees, um, we, the record now shows that if this were to be approved, there would be a removal of seventeen significant trees. The applicant has updated their their, you know, application, and that total net amount being removed has increased. Um, so I find that concerning, that we're removing potentially seventeen significant trees. Um, I want to take the time to appreciate the work that staff has done to improve this motion. Um, the the motion that Council President Chris Hoy has put before us in terms of, you know, the speed humps on Albert, the three-way stop at Lansford and Twelfth Street, um, and potentially just removing a few lots to save trees, I think is an improvement. But overall, I'm still just not convinced a as my quasi judicial role that we've met, you know, the that that reasonable design alternative, that question when it comes to significant trees. I think that we could go even further. So while I appreciate the improvement uh that the motion is before the body, I still remain opposed based on the criteria um that we could protect substantially the significant trees um with a much smaller caveat that that we would be approving uh a a variance in street standards on Twelfth Street. Um, and this is where I'm not an expert in in traffic engineering, but you know, the three-way stop at Lansford and Twelfth Street would would be better than than the the application was without that. But we're basically expanding Twelfth Street from what functionally is a one-lane street to a two-lane street that would be improved. But that, the 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 incline on that street is is seventeen point nine two percent after improvement. And having people pass each other there, likely at higher volumes, to me is concerning. So I I think that within the criteria, that's a smaller point. And the bigger point of my pushback is is the significant trees within the criteria, saying that there's a reasonable design alternative. But I want to cite my concern for for safety there as much as is possible within the criteria.
Okay, on Counselor Hoy's motion, Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues. As always, I appreciate your insights and your perspective on this. So looking through the vast quantity materials, I'm mindful of some of the public testimony that we've already received uh where we have members of the public demonstrating that design alternatives exist and recommending ways in which to save a lot of the trees. And so I think that is really important in terms of looking at some of the testimony. I am particularly struck by, it looks like the testimony from, I think it's Jeffrey James, talking about. uh, potential ways to save more of the trees. That'll be on page twelve of the four hundred and seventeen-page document. So, I know you probably have all read it, but I really wanted to highlight, underscore that because I thought that was quite distinctive. Uh, Mr. Atchison, my question for you. So, I understand that before us today, we have one of three options, affirm, deny, or modify. What are the kinds of things that council in its quasi-judicial capacity could do to modify the planning administrator's decision that could potentially address the concerns about the loss of significant trees? I'm not suggesting that you name great levels of detail, but I just think I'd like to know what, what kinds of things could we do that could modify this decision, potentially?
I, I, I don't mean to punt on this, but I'm going to defer to planning staff who's more familiar with the facts and, and might have suggestions.
Sounds good to me.
Lisa, Erin, okay.
Hey, uh, good evening, uh, members of council, Erin Pink with the Planning Division. Um, so, uh, we, um, did come back with a updated list of, uh, significant trees, um, for the site. Uh, we found sixty-four total on the property and in, uh, the right-of-way for 12th Street. Um, seventeen are proposed for removal, um, in Counselor Hoy's motion. Um, uh, he listed some of the lots that contain those, uh, significant trees. Um, and, uh, the motion there was to, um, either, uh, preserve them, um, you know, include those in some of the open space areas. Um, and then, uh, give the applicant an opportunity to, uh, maybe make up the, the loss of lots elsewhere on the site.
So is that the, is that a modification that we could potentially pursue in lieu of merely affirming the planning administrator's recommendation?
It would be affirming the planning administrator's decision with additional conditions requiring preservation of some of those trees.
Okay, so a vote to affirm would in, would incorporate Counselor Hoy's motion, correct?
To modify, yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, that helps things for me.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, um, um, um. I agree, the, the, the modification we're looking at is the amended motion made by Counselor Hoy. So, that's, that's the middle of the three options, deny, uh, modify, or affirm. Um. I, 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 I'm very interested, Mr. Panko, in all these differences between the number of trees. I mean, because as I understand it, the developer first came in and said, oh, we're only going to have to remove four trees. And part of the reason they did that, they said, oh, it's so hard to measure trees. I mean, that was something that was in some of the media, well, no, that's a new fact, I'm sorry, but, but, um, you know, but that was something they testified about, you know, we have to go out there, et cetera, and as my recollection is, is that city arborist and the city staff went out there and found a whole lot more trees. So what I'm interested in is, how many trees did the applicant first say were there significant? How many did this have to take away, and how many did the staff, uh, on their, um, uh, investigation reveal?
So I think we included this, uh, information in our staff report.
Yeah, I know you did, I just want to bring it out again.
Correct, um, so, uh, in staff's review of their plans, uh, forty-eight of the significant trees were correctly identified. Um, staff found sixteen additional significant trees that were not identified on the plan. And then, uh, ten of the significant trees that the applicant originally identified, um, were not in fact significant trees, or were not, uh, trees located on the property.
Okay. So of these ten significant trees, how many of them were in areas, um, that they were saying they wouldn't be removing? Do you understand what I mean? They said, oh, here's ten significant trees, and you determined that they weren't significant trees, but were they saying, here are ten significant trees that we're not going to remove? So that, that is our credit?
It was, so, so of those ten, uh, four of the trees had a diameter less than twenty-four inches, um, so it didn't meet the definition of significant. Um, two of the significant trees were wind thrown, um, so, uh, they were on the ground, uh, at the time staff observed them. Um, already dead, uh, three of the significant trees were located off-site on adjacent property, so.
So just so I'm being clear now, there were four trees that were, that they said are significant, they weren't significant. There were two of those trees that they said were significant that were dead. And there were three of those significant trees that they said are, you know, that you found weren't even on the property. So is it fair to say that the developer was saying, here are ten trees, which we discovered later were not ten trees, and they were not proposing to remove those ten trees, were they? They were saying, we're going to save these ten trees.
I don't have the status on those ten individual trees.
Okay, but in, in any event, ten of those trees that you determined weren't significant trees?
Yes.
Okay.
But, Tom, well, this, uh, is this included in Hoy's motion? I mean, does Hoy's motion address?
I, I don't know that, that's what I was.
Okay, I'm just checking, I just wanted to understand if, if the trees that Chris is talking about and you're talking about are the same trees, or are we?
Yeah.
Chris?
I don't know.
You know?
I, I don't know.
I was going to restate my, that part of my motion, kind of in response to Counselor Nordike, um, just, and I'm just limiting it to my first, the first part that just strictly relates to trees. So this isn't a complete restatement. But it's, the applicant shall preserve the significant trees on lots forty, forty-one, forty-three, fifty-eight through sixty, sixty-two through sixty-four, and ninety-six. The applicant may either eliminate these, but, these lots by dedicating as common open space or incorporating them into the homestead lot. The applicant may choose to redesign their plan prior to final flat submission to add up to ten additional lots elsewhere on the site, so long as all other applicable development standards are met. So that's the part related just to the trees.
Okay. I- is there any further, yeah, Tom?
Just one more thing, I, I, I just want to say I agree with what Counselor Phillips is saying, and I also, uh, the 12th Street can't be modified issue, I, 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 I agree with the, uh, Counselor, uh, Phillips that, in fact, it might be modified, and, 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 and I don't agree with the staff saying, oh, you can never do this. Uh, because it would relate to all these other changes that have to be made. So what? You know, that they're not saying it couldn't be modified, they're just saying if you mo- if you modify it, you have to do something else. So. I'm going to vote against the, uh, the, the amended motion.
Okay. All right, um, any further discussion on Counselor Hoy's motion? Ah, yes, Counselor Leon?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, this is Counselor Leon. Can, uh, two requests, one, um, at the end, Counselor Hoy, would you be able to repeat what your motion is? Um, and then, um, my other question has more to do with, um, I guess my main concerns, like I keep hearing from folks, and it's also been something of a concern to me in terms of, um, the number of trees that, um, are being requested to be removed. I really, uh, just after looking at all the materials that's been submitted, I have some major concerns whether or not there was actually due diligence, enough due diligence was done to ensure there was no alternative, um, pathway in terms of, um, saving more of the significant trees. I mean, if we think about the city saying we're losing, continue to lose a large number of significant trees, and, you know, this is a problematic issue that it's not the first time that we've seen it, but we're continuing to see this. So what are ways are we actually ensuring that we are keeping our ordinances in place, especially when it comes to what we define as a significant tree? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh. It's like we're ready to vote. Dan, how many votes do we need to approve?
Uh, the, the majority of the councillors' presence, I'm not sure all who's here.
Okay, uh, Amy, do you want to call the roll this, uh, Counselor Hoy, why don't you restate your motion, and, and then we'll go ahead and vote?
Happy to do so, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move approval of the subdivision with conditions one through twenty as listed in the November third decision, plus the following additional conditions of approval. The applicant shall preserve the significant trees on lots forty, forty-one, forty-three, fifty-eight through sixty, sixty-two through sixty-four, and ninety-six. The applicant may either eliminate these lots by dedicating as common open space or incorporating them into the homestead lot. The applicant may choose to redesign their plan prior to final flat submission to add up to ten additional lots elsewhere on the site, so long as all other applicable development standards are met. And, the applicant shall relocate the pedestrian path between Hill Thicker and Ramsey to ensure it does not impact any significant trees. And, as proposed by the applicant, as a condition of phase one, the applicant shall construct speed humps on Albert Street Southeast to city standards in locations approved by the Public Works Department. And, as a condition of phase two, the applicant shall install an always-stop at the intersection of 12th Street Southeast and Lansford Drive Southeast.
Okay. All right, ready? Uh, Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton is absent, Counselor Anderson?
No.
Counselor Phillips?
No.
Counselor Leung?
No.
Counselor Gonzalez?
No.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Hey, motion fails. Counselor Hoy, you want to try again?
I've got nothing, somebody else can make a motion, I didn't, I gave it my best shot.
Okay, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Jose Gonzalez. Um, it's, uh, probably the best, uh, it wa- it is, uh, a way to proceed, uh, and move forward with this. I think Counselor Hoy had a, a, a very good compromise, but, uh, I think this is also a very good compromise, will allow this project to move forward. We, we all know we need the housing. Uh, we all know we have a quasi-judicial responsibility here, not a political responsibility. I worry on these land use things that they become very political and lose their, uh, and councillors lose track of their responsibilities, so I think at least we'll try again on, uh, taking a vote on, on moving this one forward, based on the record we have. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Bennett, um, and I appreciate, you know, the, the discussion. I do think that the, the prior motion was superior to the, 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 the decision being considered right now. Um, so I, I am emphatic opposition to, to this, uh, you know, uh, proposal. Um, and I really, I do appreciate, you know, uh, City Council, uh, President, uh, working with staff to, to make the prior, uh, recommendations, I just don't think they went far enough. So, uh, as, you know, I, based on the, the role that we have as jurors in this quasi-judicial application, is my opinion that the applicant did not meet the burden of proof, um, on reasonable design alternatives, uh, with regards to significant trees, and I have concerns about 12th Street, uh, but that's a secondary issue. So I would encourage my colleagues as well to vote in opposition to this.
Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Leon. Uh, I also echo, uh, Counselor Phillips' sentiments in terms of, you know, I agreed that the initial, uh, motion made by, alternative motion made by, uh, Counselor Hoy was a good start, but it still wasn't enough. But of course, the original is, is even worse, I'm going to be voting no on this as well, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, Amy, you want to call the roll?
Counselor Stapleton is absent, Counselor Anderson?
No.
Counselor Phillips?
No.
Counselor Leung?
No.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye. Yes.
Counselor Hoy?
No.
Counselor Nordike? Counselor Nordike? Nay, sorry, I'll say it a little louder. Thank you. Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion fails. Okay. Counselor Phillips, you have a motion?
Do, do we, I, I probably do, um, is, so, it, well, how does this work now that we've, we've exhausted two of the three options? Do we need, need a motion now?
No.
Uh, you could, well, yeah, we need a motion to proceed, uh, it was, uh, as laid out, as I understood it, it was sort of affirm, modify, or deny. So there's still modify is always available. Uh, and deny is also available.
Of course.
I, I'm not prepared to offer, uh, any modifications, I mean, the, the one thing that would further improve it, but I'm, I'm still not convinced it's adequate, given the starting point from the applicant, um, would be to include the three-way stop in phase one on Lansford and 12th Street, but I still think that's, um, insufficient. Uh, so, uh, my motion would be, I move to deny this application.
Already did.
Does, is, I guess my question to the?
Second.
Oh, second, is, is that needed? Do we need that motion, or since we exhausted two?
I, I think you would, don't, Tom, do you disagree, don't think we need?
I, I disagree, but, uh, as City Attorney, I defer to him, I defer to him.
For purposes of clarity, yes, I would like the council to adopt a, a motion.
Okay. Is that a, okay, okay, Counselor Phillips is, uh, moving denial, who's going to second that one? Counselor Hoy?
Second, yeah.
Uh, Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, I, I will be supporting this motion. Colleagues, I appreciate the fact that we engage in respectful discourse, and even when motions fail, we don't raise our voices to go along with respectful agreement or disagreement. So first of all, I want to thank you all for that, because in my day job, you can't take that for granted. So I felt that Counselor Hoy made a valiant effort to thread the needle, but I respect and support council's decision to turn it down. I think under the circumstances, it makes sense to support Counselor Phillips' motion and send this project back. I think that the developer has heard an earful, not only from the Planning Commission, the city staff, and now us, but they've also heard from members of the public about their concerns. And so I, I look forward to if and when this project comes back with those concerns in mind. But for now, I think we've reached a logical stopping point, and I will look forward to more respectful dialogue in the future on, eh, about projects like this and other development. Because Salem is going to keep on growing, we're going to keep seeing projects, uh, coming to us from all kinds of backgrounds, so. I will be supporting Counselor Phillips' motion, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if, uh, if the recorder called the roll?
Counselor Stapleton is absent, Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Hey.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
No. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can say a few words about process?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Atchison, City Attorney, so, um, we still need to adopt a final written decision. The hundred and twenty-day, uh, rule for these types of applications is going to run on Tuesday, the, uh, um, March fifteenth, so we're going to try to get this back in front of you by then. The applicant has a right under Oregon law to, uh, when, when there's a vote to deny an application, the applicant has a right to propose conditions or modify the application in a manner they, they feel would meet the, the, the reasons for denial. So, and I believe the applicant's going to try to take advantage of that opportunity, so. Coming back to you on the fourteenth will probably be, um, something from the applicant proposing conditions, um, or something of that like, in the alternative, there's going to be an order, uh, for your adoption to deny it. Ex-party rules continue to apply. Please ignore, um, any emails regarding Myers Farm, this application number, all that good stuff. You can talk to staff, please don't talk to the applicant or the public about it, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then. Just one second here, I'm going to go back here. Three point two A, Phillips?
Hang on, let me navigate to that, uh, okay, this is three point two A, so. Here we go, okay.
You've pulled it.
Yeah, I did, I did, so, um, uh, Trevor Phillips, uh, City Council Ward Three, I move, uh, that we ad- adopt the resolution. Um, where is it? Whi- which one is it, three point two? I think I scrolled past, three point two.
2022-10.
Oh, my goodness.
This is the resolution number.
Yeah, it was on the like urban renewal. Sorry, the transition caught me off guard. I apologize. Okay, so Trevor Phillips, Ward Three, City Counselor. I move that we adopt the resolution 22-59, urging Congress to lead the global effort to prevent nuclear war.
I would ask you to add to that, Counselor Phillips, that the Scrivener errors will be corrected by the by the city attorney.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. So agreed.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Briefly, if I could talk about it?
Absolutely.
So I appreciate Mayor Bennett, you hearing the call from our passionate citizen activist, Peter Burgele, and bringing this to city staff and getting us to vote on this tonight. I just wanted to once again highlight this. I think there's going to be broad support for it tonight. But I think this is an important thing to highlight and for us all to support with the backdrop of the conflict, the, in my opinion, internationally illegal invasion of Ukraine by Vladimir Putin's regime. So I think that, you know, these things are connected and by being, you know, members of the Salem public, we should speak out in one voice in saying that, you know, the prospect of having nuclear weapons, which would ensure the potential destruction of all life on this planet, need to be eradicated. I see that as a city counselor. I see that as a physician with over 16 years of practice, seeing, you know, what any manner of trauma can do. I can't even imagine the things I've read about in my training in terms of, you know, the harms of radiation. And it's the statement from the International Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War that the Ukraine crisis could in fact trigger a nuclear catastrophe and that the elimination of nuclear weapons is an urgent medical humanitarian and public health imperative. So I emphatically support this. I've got young kids. I want to have our world be around for generations to come, and I think we've got to work to, you know, strengthen our ties with communication and diplomatic resolution, not with the threat of, you know, our all mutual destruction. So yes, I support this emphatically.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thanks. What he said, but I also want to make a little Scrivener's error. I think Counselor Phillips are correct a little oral Scrivener error. I think he said resolution 2259. I think the resolution number is 2022-10. That's the resolution. Yeah, so just so we can have that corrected, yeah.
I will be. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Amy, you want to call the roll, please?
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton's absent. Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 3.2B Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation concerning the acquisition of property for a commercial street southeast buffer bike lanes.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I need to declare potential conflict of interest
Okay.
forward. My apologies for interrupting, but I want to declare potential conflict of interest for this measure. And there's one other item that I had polled simply because my family has property near the affected area that was outlined in the thick black lining in your materials. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm thrilled about this. We've had many, many conversations about just lines on the street often things isn't good enough and especially lines on the street in a busy street. And I will tell you, I ride my bike up Commercial Street, the exact area, all the time to get from my house to the store where I go shopping to turn around and come back. And I'm a rather aggressive rider, but even I sometimes feel a little concerned. So I commend the Public Works Department for doing this, and I think it's great. Plus, it's good for me not to always talk about doing the same thing on McGill Crest whenever that comes up. So I think this is terrific and kudos to the Public Works staff and everybody else who has moved this project forward.
Yeah, I'll second you on that one. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add my voice. And I'd also thank you, Mr. Fernandez, I see popped on here. I would also just like to put a just a request in or just kind of reaffirm my desire to have a connected buffered bike lane system at some point. Like, I hope that's where we're we're moving toward, where we have a connected system rather than a series of unconnected parts. And I think that would be a lot more effective. But and I know that takes time and money, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Very good. Okay, any further discussion? Amy, you want to call the roll?
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Nay.
Counselor Stapleton's absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 3.2D Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move this item to be postponed until the second meeting in March so that Counselor Stapleton may be present for the conversation.
Second. Second by Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is, it's been an ongoing conversation. There's no rush to get it done. Counselor Stapleton isn't able to be here with us tonight. I just want to make sure she's available to represent her ward as she sees fit. And I just think that we could put this off for two meetings and be just fine.
We've had it off for almost 10 years. Might as well keep it.
Exactly.
It ain't going nowhere, I don't think.
That's right. That's right.
Very good. Okay, any further discussion? Amy, would you call the roll?
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton's absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. 3.2E Tom Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council adopt resolution 2022-12, amending council policy number C-7, investment policy and portfolio guidelines.
Second.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I am the
Always going to second that one, I think.
Okay, whoever did it, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the Chair of the City Finance Committee, and we have spent a lot of time with the help of Mr. Aggleston and other people on the staff working through this. We've met with the representatives of the group that is advising us about what is, what our investment policy should be. And we spent a lot of time on this, and I think it's a very appropriate way for us to look at responsible, socially responsible investments. And part of the things we weigh are what return we get, what return we don't get. I mean, it's not just is this, we don't look at this narrowly. We look at it quite broadly with all these different criteria. So I think, I think it's a good policy and I heartily approve it. And I wanted just to bring this to the public that, that we in fact look at social responsibility investments of our funds. But I also want to add that I'm going to bring this up at the next Finance Committee meeting, and this relates to the atrocities in in the Ukraine. And I'm wondering if we are investing in any Russian-owned assets or anything that is connected to you know, Russian oligarchs or Russian businesses. I don't know that we do. I don't think we do, but I'd like to find out from the Finance Committee because look at all the things that we are implying as a government applying as sanctions and potentially, you know, that might relate to our investment policy. Or I'm not sure it does, but I'll be talking to the, we'll be discussing that at the next Finance Committee meeting.
I sure hope we're not. It seems like
I do too. Yeah, I do too.
Crazy when you've got a a currency that's dropped to below a penny. I mean, you've got a real problem going on.
You're speaking on practical grounds, Mr. Mayor. I think there are other grounds that need, that are involved.
I'm sure there are. We'll have lots of places to go. What will be, I'm just curious about this. This does not specifically disinvest in anything at this.
No, no, it's how, it's moving forward, what we do moving forward.
Yeah, is there a, is there a fiduciary analysis along with the I went through this back in the 80s. I was in the legislature when we went through the South African investor, and there were a lot, there was a lot of discussion around the the responsibilities of us, of members of a governing body dealing with public money. And what was it? Is the role of public money to make money or to?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, we had those discussions, Mr. Mayor. We really talked about our fiduciary obligations. How do we weigh that? And that's part of the wide analysis we did on everything. So I think that this policy takes into account our duty as a fiduciary of public funds to achieve a reasonable rate of investment on our money.
Right. What's a reasonable rate then?
Well, yeah, I wish. I don't know.
I'd like to know.
It's better than, a reasonable rate is better than my bank account rate. I'll tell you that. You know, that's, you know, that's why we hired the experts and that's why we have the people enough, you know, the the consultants we have are telling us that this policy will produce a reasonable rate of investment.
Great. Will we, will we see this, or will the council see this outcome?
No, I don't think so. Yeah, I mean, at most what they will see is here is a report what our investments have been in following the policy laid out by the council in the investment plan.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind folks that under the proposal tonight, even with the ESG or environmental, social, and governance categories taken into consideration, our investment advisor is still going to look for companies that meet traditional investment standards. Things like minimum credit ratings, favorable relative yields. They still have to meet a lot of other criteria to be an investment worthy of our taxpayer dollars. So it's not as if we're investing in crazy flood-by-night operations just in the sake of environmental and social governance categories. There's still our traditional standards that we will expect our advisor to meet. So I intend on supporting the motion.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. That's really good. I think for the public to understand that's exactly how this will work. It is not a decisions are not being made on single issues aside from the financial responsibilities of the best possible financial decisions, I guess. Counselor Gonzalez?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I served with Tom on the Finance Committee and just wanted to let you know that the, this is not the first time a municipality has asked these advisors for this information. So the information they shared, the spreadsheet, the manner that they look at this has been well thought out, you know, so just wanted to share that.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Phillips?
Yeah, thank you. I serve with Counselor Gonzalez and Tom Anderson, as well as Counselor Stapleton on the Finance Committee. And we had an opportunity to talk about this over multiple meetings. It got unanimous support. The change, I think, is impactful, but in terms of like financial considerations, it's actually pretty nominal. The number of entities that were allowed to legally invest in prior to this was in the mid 80s, possibly 84. And either adopting the middle of the road or the most, the more stringent one, which is what we did, really either way limits it to about 72 entities that we can invest in broadly speaking. So it wasn't that much of a change from what our standard business already is, but it is getting us away from things that I don't think it's just a moral reason to get away from, but also financially, like fossil fuels. It's unclear like what their future is broadly speaking. So it is a change, but we're not the first community to do this. And we, you know, we had our concerns addressed within that, you know, Subcommittee on Finance, and I wholeheartedly endorse this.
Well, they were up today, so I don't know. Okay, sounds good. Any further discussion? Amy? Want to call the roll, please?
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Counselor Nordike, 3.3A.
Can I interrupt? I'm so sorry for one minute. The interpreters were scheduled until eight o'clock and we need to leave the meeting, but it does seem like there's a deaf participant and I'm just iffy on what to do, so I wanted your advice. And I couldn't type anything in the chat because it's disabled.
Ah, okay. Courtney?
Actually, I don't think it's an eight o'clock stop and I'll go ahead and work with Jordan. Thank you.
Okay, so meeting.
Are you okay on this then? Are you?
We stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I'll continue.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Nordike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Nordike from Ward Seven. And I appreciate our interpreter speaking up. As a person who has had a hearing disability since I was an infant, I sincerely appreciate your efforts. So thank you. Mr. Mayor, the only reason I polled 3.3A is to declare another potential conflict of interest for the same reason. My family owns property near the affected area.
Okay.
With that, I have no further comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Okay. Second by Anderson. Any discussion on this item? Okay, Amy, could you call the roll? And we're noting Nordike's potential conflict. Amy, do you want to call a roll?
I apologize. I thought I was unmuted.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Nay.
Counselor Stapleton? Is absent. And Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll go to information reports, item six. Anyone got any? Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding item 6F, I move City Council to call up item 6F and conduct a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, what you got there?
This is while you were out, Mr. Mayor. The West Salem Neighborhood Association is without a counselor currently, and they have new information that they want to be considered, and so I committed to calling this up for them.
Great, thank you. Okay?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Amy, could you call the roll on that motion?
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Anything further there? Okay, there are no first readings. We'll go to our second reading.
ordinance bill number 322, an ordinance relating to land use, amending SRC 530.001, .005, .015, .020, .025, .030, .035, and .040. Counselor Stapleton is absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion, or the bill passes. Okay? Now, we've got some folks who signed up on issues that are not on tonight's agenda, so I'll start calling them up. Cory Poole?
All right, I'm going to be sharing my screen. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bennett and esteemed counselors. My name Thank you, Mayor Bennett and esteemed counselors. My name's Cory Poole. I am the Chair of the Semken Neighborhood Association and business owner on Turner Road. All of the photos in this slideshow were taken today at Cascade Gateway Park. All of the areas in these photos were cleaned by city staff and contractors last September. I'm very sorry that I need to come to you tonight. It has been two years since we've had safe access to our neighborhood park, two years since we've had peace of mind, two years since we felt safe at night. Our park has been taken from us. There are currently around seventy illegal campsites inside Cascade Gateway Park, which is supposed to be closed to all users. Almost immediately after the park was cleaned in August and September, homeless campers started returning to the park. We were told by the city the park would be closed to everyone and that illegal campers would be removed immediately if they came back to Cascade Gateway. First, there were three tents. We reported them. Then there were seven tents. We reported them. Now there are around seventy tents. Nothing has been done. I understand that we now have a visible homeless crisis in many parts of Salem. I don't believe anyone in Salem should have to experience the destructive and dangerous unmanaged camps next to their homes. But after two years to still have this situation in a city park next to two communities comprised almost entirely of vulnerable senior citizens is unacceptable. We continue to have regular trespass and theft originating from these camps. The police tell us their hands are tied. The city does little to help. Homeless service providers do nothing to help. In a normal year, Cascade Gateway Park would already be full of fishermen on a daily basis. Disc golfers would be showing up to tee off on the disc golf course. The dog park would have happy pups running around after each other. Families and groups would be enjoying our playground and picnic area. The geese would be swimming in the lake rather than eating garbage from campsites. Wild ducks would be nesting on the island in Worth Lake, but now the island is covered with tons of garbage and human waste. Our park is a disaster and it is entirely the result of city policy. We are being told that the park will be cleaned up in March, long overdue. I hope that you, our council, will allocate necessary resources to restore our park and keep it free of future camps. You have it in your power to restore our park and our faith in City Council. Please restore our neighborhood to the beautiful and peaceful place it once was. And I want to get forward to a critical slide here. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cory. Mr. Powers, I, I know this is your last day, so you can be real, real, real candid about this. Why are the police saying they cannot do anything about this? Why can't we just throw these people out of that park the first hand up? I'm not getting it. What is, what is going on that? We start with one or three, but we're not enforcing our own requirement that that be kept clear for? What, what's the deal?
Well, I think there's a couple of factors, Mayor Bennett, Council. One is, is really the lack of any meaningful sanction. Individuals will, will basically ignore our officers, will ignore the outreach workers because they know the extent of the cities.
They ignore police officers saying that it is posted, no trespassing, no day use. Get out of here. They ignore that?
Some of, some of the unhoused do that, yes.
Okay.
The other is, is we're frankly, you know, struggling to keep up with the camping that's occurring throughout, throughout the city. We will be back to Cascade's Gateway to clean, to clean it up and we will, you know, we will attempt to encourage, require, enforce individuals to leave the park. However, there will be individuals that will, that will basically ignore our, our efforts.
You know, I, and, and you know this, we've, we've talked about this endlessly, I know, but it continues to be, I think, sort of unbelievable that we can't say the law says, a police officer says, the law is, the rules are, the sign says, and they are told to pound sand when they tell some guy to get out of our park. Because you know how, I mean, you know what this sounds like. If, if, if people told Anderson to get out of the park, he'd be, he'd be immediately out of there. Immediately, he'd leave. I've seen him leave. No, I'm just kidding, Tom. But I, you know, it's, I, I think one of the problems is it becomes almost counterintuitive that people won't listen to the police. And that's, I, I hope, and, and I know, I know we've, we've talked endlessly about this, but at a certain point, I think people have a hard time when we tell, because I, I have to tell them this exactly what you're saying. I have to tell people that, and I know every counselor has to go through this. I think people are just stunned that we are that powerless in terms of protecting our public facilities and that they're allowed to degenerate to the extent that we're looking in Cory's pictures. You know, that's the, so, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would leave because I'm not in what I would call, at least I hope, maybe some of you might think, in the, in the classifications of the people who are homeless, people who lost their job, et cetera, had some financial thing around the streets.
No, no, then what are they, why are they really?
Wait, Chuck, let me finish. People who are mentally ill, people who are addicted to substances and people who, let's just say, are not interested in obeying the rules and regulations. And I think that's the problem here. These are, with the exception of the first population I talked about, these are hard people to deal with because of their, their personal animosity toward authority or their mental illness or addiction. But I think the real problem here is that there is no meaningful punishment because there is no jail time. The, when the city cites somebody, the county jail, Marion County Jail, is not going to take them because they have their own criteria for their limited resources of who they're going to take in, who they're going to incarcerate. So that's the problem. And then there's no other real punishment because it just doesn't happen. Even if they're caught, you know, brought into the, the legal system and they're found guilty of whatever they are and they're sentenced to jail, it's not going to happen because the city knows we can't ask for that because the county won't take it. So it's just, it's a, it's a real perpetual problem. But what I want to, I, I know it's, you know, the Cory's Paradise Island is in, is in my ward and also Counselor Phillips' ward. And I, I, I cannot empathize and sympathize with these folks enough for what the problems they have. And I appreciate Cory's continual bringing this issue to us. So Gretchen Bennett and I have been there a number of times to the meeting and I know that, you know, the city cleanup again is happening in March and I, I'm hoping, which is tomorrow, I'm hoping we can hear from Mr. Powers when that might be happening. And then we really need a commitment to, to, I don't know, I'll just say nip it in the bud, to stop it earlier rather than let it get to this, this morass.
If, if I may, Mayor Bennett, the cleanup is scheduled for March tenth and I think it's really in, I, I agree with Counselor Anderson and thanking Mr. Poole for continuing to, to bring this to my attention, to the city's attention. What, what may, what would also help is, is an investment of, of resources just for cleanup, just for the response to problematic areas. So, Mayor Bennett, as you mentioned, one tent is less likely to become two tents, which is less likely to become ten tents, which is less likely to become fifty tents. And right now, we do not have that resource. Right now, we're asking existing staff to, to respond to camps, to respond to really problematic, horrible areas. Claggett Creek, Marion Square is actually, Marion Square Park is actually before, Cascade's Gateway, you know, other areas where the number of, of unmanaged campers has just grown to a point where there's the environmental and, and societal neighborhood impacts that were also mentioned earlier by, by Counselor Gonzalez as far as his ward. It, it truly is a citywide problem. It's, it's, it's an example of how this national homelessness crisis and the state's lack of funding for mental health and behavioral health systems is, is being felt here at the city level. The impacts are felt at, at the city level, the park level, the neighborhood level.
Mr. Powers, you mentioned to us along the way in the past several months that you would be looking at a, a budget item that is kind of a, an immediate reaction to these. I can't remember what the term was you used for it. It had a couple of public works guys, a couple of cops, a couple of, I can't remember of the whole package you had. But are you, are we still going to see that this year, do you think?
You won't see it for me. It will be coming after, after. We're sure and we're confident we will receive the funding, but we, we are waiting until we receive state funding to close the gap on the Navigation Center, which is also a piece to this really, you know, challenging puzzle of trying to get resources to the people who desperately need resources, resources that go beyond a, a police officer, a, a, a city team, really motivating them to move on. We really need to help them move to places that are more suitable for the levels of trauma that many of, of our unhoused residents are experiencing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Poole, for your dogged, holding us accountable. I appreciate it, like I've said before, I do. And I'm, I feel your frustration. I wish I had a good, I wish I had a, a good solution for you tonight. I don't. What I can say is that the whole, the entire Salem delegation has been working on some more resources for the city. And I'm pleased to say that it looks very likely that we'll be getting the things that we've been asking for from the state. I have good reason to believe that we will get that gap funding for the Navigation Center, also for more sheltering, also to complete the Equina Hall project. And then there's also some coordination money for, for in Pol County, which will indirectly benefit the city. So I know that's a little bit more long-term, but there is hope on the horizon and it's the best I've got right now.
I think that's really helpful, Counselor, that this has at no point, Cory, been an ignored problem. It is, it is enormously frustrating, but it has also got a lot of, a lot of work being done on it that has been done over the past five, six years as well. And as Counselor Hoy mentions, there's a lot of stuff in the works even right now to continue to address it. The problem is, I still think there's going to be some guy pitch a tent in that park and I still can't believe we can't get that guy to move. That's the part I think is most frustrating for all of us as citizens of the city. Counselor Gonzalez?
You know, just a question, because I don't, I don't see the same kind of a buildup in Kaiser Parks. Policy-wise, what's the difference? What is it that allows that to happen here and not in Kaiser? There's some, something else is different because Kaiser is closer than that park to the downtown core. So I just, I don't know, maybe they don't have, I don't have to get an answer today, but that's just something I've been thinking about.
Yeah, it's a good question. Counselor Phillips?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bennett. And again, thank you, Cory Poole, for, you know, your continued efforts to, you know, be our eyes and ears on the ground. I mean, I, it is certainly very frustrating to, to hear about the real world limitations of, you know, local small government. And my question to Steve Powers is similar to what, you know, Mayor Bennett and others have asked, but, you know, is it just that our rate limiting step is that lack of the, the new team of six F T Es with a couple sworn officers there in backup positions? Or are there other, like, you know, I think that's an important one that I would be very supportive of, but like, what are the rate limiting steps? Because like, it's, we're probably going to get this park cleaner middle of this month, but then what's to prevent it from, you know, reoccurring? And is a six-person F T E team enough to prevent the accumulation to go from two to seventy? Like, you know, what would it take? What are the rate limiting steps?
Mayor Bennett, I'm happy to try to answer that question. Whether it's appropriate for this under public comment, I'll, I'll leave to you as Presiding Officer. We can certainly come back to, Kristen Rutherford and Gretchen Bennett can certainly come back to Council to provide a more thorough response to what I'm about to say to Counselor Phillips, which I'm, which I'm very comfortable doing so if you, as Presiding Officer, want me to.
Well, why don't I, you go, I, I just let you use your judgment in terms of, you know, can you answer? Can you answer that or should we wait and have a, a more thorough information report and look at the budget? I, I?
I, I, you know, I will give, I will give an introduction to the question, which I think would require more thorough discussion by, by Council because I do believe there's urgency to this issue that requires Council consideration prior to your Budget Committee meetings later this year. To answer Counselor Phillips's question, perhaps not as directly as he would like, the city is responsible for its properties and has, has been shown, and, and I admit, you know, fully that my recommendation was to allow use of that park during the height of the pandemic. And I think one reason we're still seeing some of the remnants, as horrific as the pictures show them at Mr. Poole, are because that park was allowed to be used. All of our parks and city rights of way are the city's responsibility. This council has done some great work in stepping into areas which arguably are the responsibility of other governments, county, state, federal, regional. There is no other entity, governmental entity, that's responsible for the city's parks and rights of way. So this rapid response team is really intended to help the city manage its responsibility while you, while we, while the city continues to make some great investments and programs that will really help our unhoused residents. There are some unhoused residents whom help will be very difficult to provide, for, for us to reach. So will there still be tents? Will there still be unmanaged camping? Will there still be outdoor living? Yes. And, and again, the rapid response team is intended to help us, the city, do a much better job of managing the one piece to this puzzle that is clearly and solely our responsibility, which is, is maintaining our parks and rights of way from, from impacts. Whether the impact is caused by someone who's unhoused or, or someone who's illegally dumping or, or dropping off stolen cars or, or whatever the impacts might be, that we need this, this investment in this, in that piece of this larger national problem. Whether six is enough, that's, that's where I, I think a, a better response should come from, from the staff that will be here after, after tonight.
Thank you. That was, that was very helpful, Mr. Powers. That was really good. I, I think, Trevor, did you find that?
Oh, that was so helpful. I'm sorry to put you on, on the hot seat on your last day out.
I know.
Hours, but that was.
He's not going to just walk out of here and go to the Upper Peninsula and sit in the snow, by golly.
Yeah, that was really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. Sorry, my mute button was struggling. Thank you, Mr. Poole, once again for your testimony. Mr. Poole and I toured some of the homeless encampments last year it was just to help me understand firsthand the magnitude of the problem. And I appreciate you, Cory, for speaking on behalf of your residents. I do want to remind folks that we can't simply police our way out of homelessness.
Right.
And we have constitutional restrictions on what cities can do that most people don't know about. But I would recommend Googling the class action lawsuit that homeless individuals brought against the city of Grants Pass. The city of Grants Pass tried to fine people for sleeping outdoors. And that was based on another series of rulings, which I won't go into great detail, but the bottom line is you can't for, punish people for sleeping outdoors in public spaces if there aren't enough shelter beds for every single homeless soul in town. We have roughly fifteen hundred homeless souls in the city of Salem. Some of them are homeless children. Some of them are homeless senior citizens with severe disabilities and limitations on their abilities. Some have a criminal record. We all know that. We know that the Homeless Alliance posted on. We know that the Homeless Alliance posted online today that between twenty and forty percent of homeless individuals have substance use issues. Nationally, about thirty percent have a mental illness. So there's no one-size-fits-all approach to this, but I just want to remind folks that we can't simply give people a bus ticket and tell them to leave. So I understand, and you probably already know this, Corey, but I want to make sure you tell your residents that there are constitutional rights afforded to homeless individuals that mean that cities like Grants Pass, Portland, Idaho have already tried all kinds of things to push people out of their cities, and they were all declared illegal. So cities like ours, who are all bound by the same jurisdiction, all have to come up with solutions, which means taking on the lion's share of housing. It means that where we are expected to take action, other forms of government like counties have not historically. Lane County historically provides four million dollars a year towards homeless shelters in Lane County. Marion County does not do anything close to that. So hold us accountable. Hold me accountable. Hold all of your elected officials accountable. We are trying to do our part here in Salem. And I'm really excited by the legislation that folks like Counselor Hoy and Representative Hoy, I should say, are pursuing the legislature. Because as you well know, we've been looking at, can we use parts of the Salem Airport? Can we use Kmart? Can we use floodplains? No, no, and no. Can we use the fairgrounds for more than ninety days? No. So we are making all of our best efforts to make this happen. We've heard from Gretchen Bennett so many times about all of her efforts and others' efforts, my efforts, going with a real estate agent to talk to people about where we can house people in places better than Cascade Gateway Park. So I just want to make sure that you understand that I hear your frustration, but understand that we hear it too, and we are taking action on that. Thank you.
Hey, we've got a batch of, oop, sorry, Counselor Hoy. I've got quite a list here of people that want to test.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I just want to put one additional thing on the record, sort of in addition to what Counselor Nordike just said. I will note that the county has stepped up and is helping us fund the Navigation Center, and I think it's very important to have that on the record.
Yeah, they stepped up with three million dollars. But I think it's fair to say that involvement by both the state and the county have been recent phenomena over the past probably five years. And it's taken a lot of work and will continue to, as you know, Counselor. Linda Thomas?
Hi, my name is Linda Thomas, and I live in Paradise Island. And there's been a lot of things mentioned that I was going to say. But I do want to just stress that, you know, there's so many of our people are in their nineties. We've had several that are in their hundreds. And as scary as it is for them, it is for the rest of us also. And it's just really hard when you see the tents, there's becoming more and more and more. And summer's coming, and you just feel like they're going to start coming over the fence again, cutting our sheds. And it's just really uncomfortable and very scary for us. So I just wanted to say that.
March tenth, we'll have a crew out there again.
I hope so.
Yeah, you bet. Gail Burright?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gail Burright. I want my park back. For forty years, I have used the park with my family, at family reunions, fishing, watching the animals, being joyful, just seeing the antics that they go through. What's worrying me more than anything right now are the gunshots that I hear at night that other people in the park have also heard that is going on, the missing animals, the missing birds. There's a pair of eagles that have been nesting there. Those are federally protected and also have potential fines and/or prison time if they do any damage to those eagles. There's also sea eagles, osprey, that interact with everything. And we're missing birds because they're being killed. So I would like to handle that first. And that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Sandra Ramsey?
She did not come tonight. Sorry.
Okay, great. Jerry Taylor?
Good evening. I'm Pastor Taylor. I appreciate what you said about Ukraine, the rest of the staff. You were brokenhearted about it. I appreciate what you said about trees. But I want you to know, our area looks like Ukraine. And you guys will give us an answer. I know we need to do something about it. Every one of you almost came to tears about Ukraine. But you see a bunch of old people that's kicked out of their house. They saved up savings for years, and you, Mayor, okayed down the camp there. And then we'll give you, I should have had a recording. You said the same thing last ten times. I could have heard, said, well, we'll do something about it. When? I talked to Ukraine Pastor today. He has hundreds of calls coming in, he said today. But you guys, you'll say, we'll do something about it. And again, why should we believe you, Mr. Mayor? When you say you'll do something about it, you say we have people in our backyard. We didn't vote to put them in your backyard. We didn't vote to do this. But you're more concerned over Ukraine, which we need to be, over trees, which we need to be. They're cutting down our trees in our backyard. And you'll say, we'll think about doing something about it. There's people that's being raped. We'll think about doing something. And next month, it'll be the same thing. Mr. Mayor, I wish someone camp on your house. And I don't mean to be rude. But we see it every day. We see people save all their life savings to move to Paradise Island. And you will say, well, we'll do something about it. Please, this issue to me is just as important as Ukraine. They talk about nuclear war. We're hurting people here. People are dying because you council members will say, we'll do something about it. And again, I'm sorry I'm so blunt, but we're tired of hearing you say, we'll do something about it. You all voted a hundred percent about Ukraine today, and I felt your hearts bleed. When are you going to bleed for Paradise Island? I'm waiting for a response. If you'll do it. That's what I thought. See, this is why we don't get no answer from you guys. But you'll be concerned about a tree cut down across town, but when they're cut down in our area, you don't care. Sorry, I'm so blunt, but you sit there saying nothing about when it comes to other problems. You said about Ukraine tonight. I appreciate what you said. What about our little Ukraine where we live? I know you're looking at the clock now, but could you give me some kind of answer, please?
March tenth.
Because that's what you said before.
Well, that's what I'm telling you again. March tenth, and give us a call. Give us, hey, Jerry, Jerry, Jerry.
Mayor, when can I start believing you?
Give us a call if it doesn't happen, okay? Okay, call again. Time's up. Debbie Paxton? Let's see, we need to get you unmuted.
We're remuted.
There we go.
Hello, I'm Debbie Paxton, and the back of my lot faces Cascade Park, and I see a lot of campers. And I am looking forward to March tenth and April tenth to make sure they're not coming back on June tenth. That's what I'm looking forward to. Thank you for all your work you've done.
It's a good, it's a good call. Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up? Any other business? Hey, we are adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to CapitalCommunityMedia.org and follow us on social media.